Okay, I would like to call our regular Board of Education meeting to order. And this evening, we have with us group of students. We have Mrs. Gibson and Ms. McCoy's kindergarten classes and Mrs. Durst's STEAM program students. So at this time, if I could ask all those guys to come up here, please. They're going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Come on, yep, all the way around so everybody can see your faces. Mrs. Durst, if you, if we get, so that we get everybody on either side of the podium so that they can all be seen. Fabulous. Okay, I'm going to introduce everyone. First, we have with us tonight, Mrs. Durst and her students. We have Brianna Abel. Give us a little wave so everybody knows who you are. Owen Rush, Jake Joswiak, Emma Gibson, Hayden Shaq, and Luke Towner. Did we get him? Oh, I didn't see him wave, okay. All right, so that's everyone from Mrs... Oh wait, oh my gosh. Oh, and last but not least, Lucy Talto. Sorry, Lucy. McKenna? Mrs. Durst, you have a McKenna with you?
No.
No? Okay. Mrs. Durst, you have... Oh, Ava Van Floodright. Where are you, Ava? Oh my gosh, I'm so sorry, Ava. Okay, now did we get everybody?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm new at this, so bear with me, okay? Okay, next, we have from Mrs. Gibson's class, Jacob Tronley, Dax Davidson, Farah Talto, Miguel Menda Sanchez, right there, Audrey Champai. Yes, did we get a wave?
Right.
Oh, okay. Mikayla Maxwell, and Jet Towner. Oh, good wave, thank you. And that is Mrs. Gibson, right there. And down at the end, we have Mrs. McCoy with us. And from her class, we have Cody Richardson, Allison Michelasek, Natalie Michelasek, Mitchell Oldenbacher, Austin Schultz, Nora Murray, Tanner Godin, Logan Varzy, Alexandra Reeves, and Allison Atkins. Did I get everybody on this side? Oh, perfect. Okay. So now, if you guys will turn around and if everyone else will drive, they're going to lead us in the pledge. Whenever you're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent. Thank you, guys. Great job. Mrs. Durst's class is going to be coming back up in a few minutes. And Ms. Gibson and Ms. McCoy, you guys are coming back up too, right? Okay. All right, moving on, our mission statement.
At Detroit Community Schools, we provide a quality education that empowers students to be successful in a global community. Sarah.
Here.
Kyle.
Here.
Margaret.
Here.
Chris.
Here.
Sue.
Here.
Jessica will be here. And I am here, so we have a forum.
Thank you. Next, looking for a motion to approve our agenda. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next, a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I move to accept the consent agenda as presented. Second.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Mr. Wamsley?
The personality report, the one that says revised, is the one that's in the official minutes. Just, I don't believe any of them were able to make it tonight, but we had a couple new hires. We had one resignation, Sherry Sparby resigned effective November 1st. Lisa Rans, the other media specialist, will take over full-time in that position, so we won't be posting that, just increasing to it in our position. Deion Cox is the eighth-grade boys' basketball coach. Kristen Crowe and Randy Neiman, part of the K-12 theater program that's currently running, and they will be having their play in January. Megan Galvin, about February, but through higher, has completed the training. Michelle Zeller will become a preschool eight at Lee Elementary School. And then we have Lillian Zija. Zija? That's very close, I apologize for the butchering if I did. A middle-school lunch eight. And there were no questions regarding the claims accounts.
And then for the theater, that's the elementary?
That's the K-12, which has the elementary, yes. It's the one that both in district and out of district students.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing done, all those in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next, it's our True Blue Moment. It is the time we take during our meetings to recognize things that are happening in our district that are great and awesome. And this evening, we have two chances to hear about what's going on in our schools. And first, we're going to start with our elementary STEAM program and Mrs. Durst.
All right, now we're good. Except for, sure, move this down. Okay. Okay, just here are a few pictures before we do a little activity with my first graders with our STEAM. Okay, this first picture to show something. The beginning of the year, we start off some Lego challenges for the students that helps them learn how to work collaboratively in groups. They'd work in groups of forty-five students. Some of the topics that they had to do were maybe a superhero hideout, build a tower building, build a model of a bedroom, build a dream house, build a lighthouse. And they draw from a stack of Lego cards that I have, they pull out the challenge that they had to do for that day. And we kind of do the theme of whenever I get their attention to get them to stop, I'll give them the kickboards, things all the pop, or they will build their hands up so they put their hands up when the time runs out, so they have to stop, they can't do any more building. And then we go around a chair. This, it was a more difficult one. This was for upper elementary. It's famous landmarks. They had a picture, and this was of a famous milk range. Okay, I have to do that? And then show the next one. This one, if you see, this is the St. Louis Arch that they had to do right there. It was kind of a difficult challenge for them to get the arch, if you see that one there. And then this is a pyramid, the Sphinx, the pyramid, that kind of thing, they were trying to make that out of Legos. And then this was the Ku Kong Alca Estel, that's another kind of pyramid that they built. And if you can see this one on the left, they hit the Hollywood sign. So they say they tried to spell Hollywood, if you look close, there's an H, and they kind of spelled Hollywood all the time. The side of the Lego, that was kind of a tough one. This was a fourth-grade challenge, bone bridge, around the Halloween theme. They had to use hospital six. The bones were the Q-tips, then they had other supplies in the basket for them to make a bridge that had to be at least an inch off the ground, an inch wide, and where the space in between, a penny couldn't fall through. So they had some parameters that they had to follow, they worked in groups to do that. This was help Harry find a new perch. So we had to first figure out what a perch was, because a lot of students didn't know what that was. We had these little pom-pom balls that I put little eyes on, and he was perched throughout the room. They had to get Harry and build him a new perch. It had to be freestanding, it had to stand on its own, and with the supplies that I gave. So this is some of the perches there that they had to make for Harry.
What were the supplies?
They had the cupcake wrappers, they had tin foil, index cards, pipe fingers, tape, that kind of stuff, only a certain amount of tape, too. And once their supplies are gone, they have to learn, that's a hard lesson, what they do something, cut it, that's it. They don't get any new, so they kind of have to make do with whatever they have. So also think it out first before you start cutting. This was three-D geometric shapes. They watched a video on the Eiffel Tower and the structure, how there's shapes inside of three-D, so they had to make that with toothpicks and clay. So that's some of the things. This was second grade. These are, this was a haunted house challenge, or Halloween challenge for kindergarten and first grade. They worked together on homes. And this was a third-grade wings water challenge. They had to pretend that they worked in a veterinarian office, a surgical office, and a bat came in that needed new wings, and they had to design two different sets of wings for the bat to help them fly, so they had to test them to see which ones would fly best. They had to design it, vote as a team, decide which two sets to use, and then create them. So that was fun, interesting. And then that's it for my slideshow. And then I do have some first graders who are going to pair up with you, and you're going to do one of the challenges they had to do with the supplies in the basket, is they're going to make a loop glider. Okay, trust me, they're going to help you out a lot. They're really good at it, okay? So I'm going to kind of pair you up with one of them, they're going to get your supplies, and they're going to help you make a loop glider. You have to make two different kinds, one with a thick paper and one with a thin paper. And then you're going to compare and see which one flies better. It's going to go just great. I know you're going to like it. Okay. Nice parts, ready? Okay. So the board members, and I'm going to make, I need you to do this myself, because I know you want to do this, so. So the members of the cupcake, now pair you up with the thing, and don't get challenged. Okay? Do you pair it up? Number they need to get, and then get a straw, and here, and then two of those, and two of those. Okay? Anywhere you want, over that table, or down there? Two straps, two pieces of those. Give your tape, and two of these. This is where it's going to end up looking. Okay? Visual, for some of the children. Okay? Is it going to this one? Two of these. Do you got two white ones? Do you have some? Am I doing sandwiches? We can work right here. What about right here? Will this work? We may have enough space? Okay, good. Sit right here. Little piece, can you? Two sheets of those. Do you make them the same size? Really? I don't know how that is. Huh. Really? I don't want that. I have to think about that. You don't want the circles on the same side or different sides, you know?
Yeah, yeah. Do something like that.
Hey, is that going to work? It's going to fly. You guys are right to fly. Just a moment. Okay. You show me how to fly. See which one flies better. Flyers? Even left down flat. There's a little bit bigger. Will that work? Oh. Remember why we said that? So, yeah, which one's further? Which one do you think is going to go further? Did we design it okay? All right. Just gets to start flying here.
You guys were good at that. You guys are very good.
That was a good one. Yeah. Did this one go further than that one? Awesome. That's fun, babe. Do a little modification on yours, because you did one way, two ways, or one way. My teachers. Thank you. You're awesome. And I'm a sister, nice job. Thank you, guys.
That's it? Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Durst, and thank you to her students. That was very, very fun. Okay, next, we have Mrs. McCoy and Mrs. Gibson.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Mrs. McCoy, teach kindergarten. This is Mrs. Gibson, she does as well. Around the Halloween season, we do something called a pumpkin investigation, so we're going to tell you a little bit about it. These are the standards that we cover when we were doing this investigation, so a little bit from each content area. I'll read them to you a little bit. And so each class got their own pumpkin, so my class had their own, and Mrs. Gibson had her own. Those are the pictures of them. One of the first investigations we did was sink or float. We didn't use the big pumpkins, because we probably need a jiddy pool, so we just did a smaller pumpkin for this. We introduced the word hypothesis to the students. We then had them make a hypothesis of their own before testing the pumpkin to see if it would sink or float. And as you can see, the pumpkin did float, so they were very amused by that, because it feels heavy and seems like it was too heavy. Sorry about that. Another investigation we did was with measurement. We compared some of the different components from the two different pumpkins. We did the height using Unifix cubes. So we had a kid come up from each class, and we used the Unifix cubes, and they got to stack them and count them, and we got to see whose was taller. Mine lost. We also talked about the different parts of the pumpkin, which you'll see soon, and we compared the number of ribs that each pumpkin had, so the kids got to count them and go around the entire pumpkin. Mine lost again. Maybe they'll pick a better pumpkin next year. This is the investigation report that we actually used with the students, so it had just a lot of different questions. They had to look at the pumpkin and draw their own picture of it. They had to identify if it had certain parts of the pumpkin, how many cubes tall, did it sink or float, how many ribs it had. And then we've also been talking a lot about adjectives in class in our writing, and so they had to use adjectives to describe the pumpkin, or the guts inside, how it felt and smelled. We also did an estimation, so how many seeds they thought would be in the pumpkin, was it going to be more than a hundred or less than a hundred? And then they got to draw the face on their pumpkin, what they would like it to look like, and carved. And one of my students I found out went home and told his mom that it took me a really long time to get the top off, and it was true. So we did, we also did a science five senses with our pumpkin guts. And at first, they separated the seeds from the guts, and then they were able to feel the texture and see how it smelled. And some of them really liked touching the guts of the pumpkin, and some of them did not want anything to do with it. Sarah, what did you think of the pumpkin guts?
They were gross.
Jet, what did you think of the pumpkin guts? Did you like touching them? Tanner? What did you think? Did you like it or not? Most of them did not like it, which I was surprised, because they liked the, most kids, you think, liked the sticky, sticky, slimy stuff, but a lot of them, yeah, did not want to touch it, and we were talking a lot about five senses, so how it smelled and things like that. We've been working a lot with labeling, and so we were able to label all the different parts of the pumpkin, and the students were able to come up with a beginning sound of each thing that we labeled. And there's our pumpkin that we labeled. And then we used a Venn diagram to compare and contrast the two pumpkins. So some of the ideas that they came up with, the differences on each side, so Mrs. McCoy's pumpkin was short, the stem was dark, the stem was fat, and her color of the pumpkin was dark orange. Mrs. Gibson's pumpkin, ours was tall, the stem was light, the stem was skinny, and the color was light orange. And then in the middle, some of the things that they had in common, the both pumpkins had ribs, they were both orange, they both had a stem, they both had seeds, and they both had tops. So it was kind of neat thinking, having them all think about the things that were different and the things that were alike, because we've been using those terms a lot, trying to compare different things. And then we used the seeds from our pumpkins to do some pumpkin math, and we've been talking about writing equations and introduction to addition. So they took, they were given a little pile of the seeds, and they had to put them on each side, count how many they had on each side. They wrote the number under, and then were able to solve the equation and put their answer on the line. And the pumpkin investigation was a success, and I think the funnest part was just seeing the smiles on their faces, there was a lot of laughing. It did get a little crazy, because we had both classes in the same room at the same time, but it was fun crazy, and they really enjoyed it, and we really enjoyed it. Organized task. Yes. That was it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Simmons and I were just talking, we did not know that that was called a rib on a pumpkin, so we learned something from you guys today. Yeah, so we did not, we did not know that.
And it was neat to talk about the difference between that type of rib and the type of ribs that we have.
Right. Yeah, very cool. Thank you so much. Okay, next, we began to our 2018 audit budget presentation.
Here tonight is Jacob Swacinski. He is here to present the final audited FY18 budget. This is something we do annually. All the documents that are required to be submitted to the state by November 1st have been submitted for the plans, so at this time, I will turn it over to Mr. Swacinski to present it.
Thank you very much. You know, I think it's, you can tell a lot by a district from their board meetings. The true blue moments, the flyers coming in in the parking lot across the street, the painted parking spots, take a lot of pride and fun in what you guys do, and I think it's the families, too, who do that, too. So, you know, first off, that's my first impression of who you guys are.
Thank you. Awesome. Thank you.
Today, though, unfortunately, or fortunately, we get to talk about financial information. So I won't, I won't be as much fun as the flyers, or the pumpkin, or anything else. But Margaret, I think you did win the contest, if it was a contest.
Thank you for pointing that out.
So we start with responsibilities when we talk about audit. We have responsibilities as auditors, you have responsibilities as district. The district is responsible for the presentation of the financial statements. That's that big thick peck you have running. Part of that, part of that responsibility is making sure the statements are accounted for in GAAP, generally accepted accounting standards. And it also includes, most importantly, or more importantly, is the maintenance, planning, and overseeing of internal controls to make sure there's safeguards in place over those financial statements and over the finances in general. Our responsibilities at the end of the day are to put an opinion on these financial statements, that we either agree or disagree that they are in accordance with GAAP. During that audit process, to get an understanding of that, we do a lot of testing. During that audit process, to get an understanding of that, we do a lot of testing. We look at those internal controls, and we use those as our basis to design our audit procedures so that we're looking at high-risk areas more intensely than the low-risk areas, putting our attention where we need to be. We look at your policies, procedures, we do risk assessments, a whole litmus of tests. One of the things we do is data collection. That's preparing your federal reporting forms. We do a second financial statement through single audit, because we're over a certain threshold in spending. And we do compliance with the state of Michigan and federal, federal as well. So, 86 items on the state compliance. Are you having certain policies in place? Are you budgeting? Are you doing the things you're supposed to be doing financially for a district? As a result of all that evaluation, we identified no material weaknesses. Those are the highest level of deficiency you could have. None of those were identified. That's a good thing. Congratulations. There were no significant deficiencies noted. And we don't express an opinion directly on the financial state, on the internal controls, only on the financial statements in general. So, that's part of the GAAP audit, government accounting standards. The other thing I mentioned was the single audit. That's compliance with federal laws. We, you, we didn't identify any areas of non-compliance there. We tested this year the IDEA cluster. That's a special education cluster. We typically would rotate that through several programs over the course of several years. And that has an unmodified opinion. Again, unmodified opinion is a good thing. We don't wanna have a modification of that. That's another congratulations there. No material weaknesses, again, on that. And no material non-compliance were noted. Good things. One of the big changes this year in school accounting is moving, is we look at this GAAP B75. So, remember, we, our teachers and employees participate in the MIPSers program. It's an underfunded program, underfunded program. It's got a deficit at the state level. So, a couple of years ago, we put on the pension piece. Remember, a couple of years ago now? This year, now, we put on the other half of that, which is the healthcare, the unfunded healthcare. So, that's GAAP B75. You'll see that a couple of places. It is so much fun to account for that. Simply because of this right here is the, the estimation involved in that. You can see that middle column on those are the amounts ORS has determined in their guidance to us, that the value is at the date of the deficit. Your portion of the deficit. If you go a percent higher, a percent lower on that, you can see the variance in that. So, there's a great deal of estimation in that number. Some other items that are communicated to you are regulatory items. Uniform, uniform guidance is the rules that oversee the federal awards. Those have changed a little bit. New pronouncements were effective 7 or 18. Other areas that are new, or have been new, are early warning. And if your fund balance drops, it could be 0.5% of federal unrestricted revenues. You could be in an early warning state with the state of Michigan that requires additional assistance. Uniform budgeting has changed a little bit, too. We wanna make sure that we're budgeting and not going over our budget on line, on line items or by function or object code. Again, if we had disagreements with management, we would bring those to your attention. We had none. There were no uncorrected misstatements, so the financial statements are free from material misstatement. No difficulties were encountered during the audit. That's a good thing. And no significant audit adjustments were needed as a result of our audit procedures. Again, very good thing. Those are things we like to see. We did have one comment. These are usually best practice kind of things. Is the unclaimed property laws in the state of Michigan. If it's abandoned property needs to be remitted to the state. There are some checks on your outstanding checks that haven't been cleared in a while. Those typically need to be remitted to the state and not held as unclear checks. So, somebody, you wrote a check to somebody that didn't cash the check. Instead of leaving it in our bank reconciliation process to roll over, those should be remitted to the state for their holding.
And just so the board knows, that was completed right after the audit. So, they are done. So, anybody who has an uncashed check is now reporting to the state like they're all.
Yep. So, after all of that stuff, this is really what we're here for, is this unmodified opinion. What we say in this, and you can see this in the audit report, is that it's presented in accordance with principles generally accepted in the United States of America. They're free from material misstatement. So, congratulations, good opinion. I'll be the first to congratulate you. Now, we get to the fun stuff, the numbers. So, this is just a snapshot of what, what's in the big binder, of the balance sheet. This is a snapshot in time, as of June 30. You can see that our biggest assets typically are cash and due from other governments. Due from other governments are the state aid for July and August that we don't collect as of June, so they're receivable for us. Conversely, what we owe are typically salaries payable, some accrued expenses and things like that. And we also have a state aid anticipation. We don't, we only get 11 months worth of state aid, so to get through the cash flow, we have to borrow some of that at the time. So, we have to pay it back, too. So, we leave it as a liability as a issue. When we all wash out, the fund balance at the end of the year for the general fund amounted to 787,000 roughly. We also have a debt fund out there. Again, debt funds, we collect the debt levy and then use that to pay the debt, the bonds on that. So, that's all kind of held in its own fund. And then, the new fund is the 2018 Capital Projects Fund. I believe that's the last of the series of funds.
That was the series we sold in May. That's now the last series of the 2013 Florida Republic.
And as of June, there was still a fund balance left to spend of 950,000 or so. And then, the other one is food service and non-major funds. One of the things we like to share is what you have for physical assets, right? So, we have a capitalization threshold, where we take the assets we buy and we capitalize them, and we store them in a number. This is that number. You can see a substantial portion of our assets really are the building and additions, and then improvements to those as well. New additions for some equipment and furniture and vehicles. Just general overview of the debt to be paid. You can see there's the 990,000 from the last issuance. We paid down 1.8 million or so, and we have roughly about 19.69 million left to spend on the bonds. We also have some other debt type items out there. Compensated absences is one. As teachers and employees accrue, their compensated absences are about to be paid out there. So, that's the buyout of those. And then, premiums on bonds, and we have some termination benefits as well, so separation agreements. Excuse me. So, that was the balance sheet kind of stuff. And this is kind of the income statement, so the revenues taken in. When we do our budget, originally, it's usually in May or early June. We don't have an FTE count. We don't know what our state aid is gonna be. There's a lot of speculation that goes into that. That's that original budget column on the far left. As we know things and things develop, and we have a student calendar, we know what the state aid allowance is gonna be. We make amendments to that budget throughout the year, and if that middle comes. That's the last adjustment that we did to the budget in probably a Jewish. And then, at the end of the year, the actual amounts are that far right column. So, in actual, we collected in revenue about $14 million. And we expended 14.1. So, we had an operating deficit of $61,000 for the year. You can see that's less than the budget of 1.66, so we ended up better than the budget. We talk about budget variance a lot. 3% or so is conservative but reasonable. We like to call that. It's not too far outside the norm. One other thing to note is in the current year budget, you guys had budget at a zero. All the revenues equal the expenditures for the 18, 19 fiscal year. So, it's a balanced budget for the fiscal year you're currently operating. Where we get the revenues from? Remember back 25 years ago, Proposal A said you get the number of FTE times the state aid allowance. Regardless of what you collect in local property taxes, this is the amount you're gonna get. And so, that calculation, you can see the state portion is 71%, local portion 23%. You add those together, about 94% of all your revenues are coming from Proposal A legislation, how that works. Other, the other large portion of revenues we get is the federal. That's almost about 6% at 850,000. Now's the time I get to bring out the flyers. Ready? How we spend money is also important. You can see instruction takes up a big vast majority of all our expenses. That's a good thing to say, right? We're putting money back into that. And of course, supporting services also include some instructional things as well, but also administration. So, we're putting a lot of money back into the programs, into the schools, and into the classrooms that we like to see. That's looking at the departments we spend it in. This looks at where the money goes by object code. So, when we look, salaries and benefits are a huge cost of what we have. When we add those two numbers together, you come up with about 71%. My math is right? 81%. About 81% goes in, goes to pay teachers, goes to pay administration, goes to salaries. That's a huge chunk. Purchase services is always another one. It's continued to grow as we've been incentivized to use some purchase services over the last couple of years. So, these purchase services, that's about 12% or about 1.6 million.
I just wanna say on this slide for the board, over time, our purchase services has been reduced because we have brought employees back in-house and some of the internal changes we've made, so. But it's still a large part. When you're looking at any reductions we have made over the years, you're talking to people. There's no, there's supply.
Yeah, you know, when you look at budgeting, you know, you have budget and say, when we're gonna cut, it's hard to cut out of a 5% of the budget. You know, it makes it very difficult when you get put in a bad position. So, making sure that, you know, those outsourcing things, we can bring those people back. It's a great idea.
Purchase services would include all the, for custodial or substitutes?
Substitutes, our partnerships with AIS, AFT. When you look at supplies, I mean, that's not only classroom supplies, that's tires. That's the stuff we need for buses.
Fuel.
Fuel, chemicals to clean the building, the garbage bags and all that. So, that's not a lot. Big scheme.
And of course, Michigan, we've suffered with the number of FTEs and the person enrollment we have in the district. You're not the only one in the state who's seen this decline. But it looks like it's leveling out somewhat.
So, I'd make a point, if you remember, our February count was the first time we had actually increased over previous years. And we are on track to be better than we budgeted for for this year's enrollment count.
That's awesome.
One of the other struggles we have in a, in a district in the state of Michigan is our, back to the proposal A and how we get our funding, is our foundational allowance trend. Back when the Great Recession hit in 2008, the state said, okay, we're not gonna increase funding. And in fact, in 2012, they reduced our funding. We're finally back up to the levels we were back in 2009, 10, 11. And we've superseded that number in 2018. So, back to getting what we were 10 years ago.
But if you take inflationary consideration, we are still probably jumping ahead.
No, you're fine, you're fine. It's a great point, because you still are getting our increases. The, we'll get to the MIPSers rate keeps increasing, so your costs keep increasing. The state hasn't given us the money from Proposal A. We're bound to that. It's not like we can go out and get extra money.
That's not really that exciting.
It's not.
To getting a little bit more than what we were getting to run our district 10 years ago. Pretty sad, actually.
And so, we've, you know, we've eaten away at some of the fund balances. In 2013, we had 1.4 million. And that has come down to 786. Again, for 19, which is the next year on here, that green line should stay the same based on your current budget. The fund balance is important. Again, we talked about that early warning legislation, 5%, the magic number. They exchanged it a couple of years ago from looking at it as a percent of expenditures, right? Fund balance as a percent of expenditures was always how we measured that. State of Michigan recommended a few years ago, we changed that to a fund balance as 8% unrestricted revenues. And the reason they did that, because we have all this bloat in our financial information right now from the subsidized MIPSers rate, the 147th C, if you're familiar with that, 147 dollars. And so, that's what this is, this chart. It shows you that bloat that was in the, in the financial statements. State of Michigan said, instead of giving you a foundational allowance, we're gonna subsidize the MIPSers rate. So, MIPSers charges us 38% on every dollar of labor. But we only pay 26 cents out of our pocket. The rest is being given to us by the state of Michigan, and in turn, you have to turn around and pay that back to our rent.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. So, instead of getting the dollars and then you pay the higher rate, they just subsidize the rate for you.
If you look at this, 2009, we were paying 16 cents on the dollar, 16.5.
Yep.
And now, in assets of state, it's the original. The state did subsidize, we're paying 38.3 now.
Almost 40 cents on every dollar of labor for health and pension. That's a huge cost. All right, so a couple of things that are gonna affect you in the next couple of years. The first one, GAAP statement number 84. The yearbook, the bands, not the boosters, anything that we're tracking internally in our trust and agency accounts? This, these are federal accounting laws, remember? They say you need to evaluate those on whether or not those are really a trust and agency account or part of general fund. We'll take a close look at this next year. This will be effective for July 1st of 19. So, next year, we'll take a lot, a closer look at this in conjunction with your staff. The other one.
We often refer to that as our student activities accounts.
Thank you.
Internally. So, that's not only band, and it's all the athletic teams that have an activity. It's the grade levels that have a student activities account. That's what could be looked at in the future.
Yeah, fundraising accounts. And so, what that would mean is we'd just have to have a budget line item for that, revenues and expenses.
For each individual account.
Something we'll look at as we get more guidance on it. That's, that's the intent. You could probably budget it in a total as well.
And we have, this is the board, we have an account number for every single one of those student activity. All the funds are put into one account, but within that one, we have an account number, so they add up. So, we do track that by activity and by account number.
Yeah, the bones, the bones are good, and we'll just see how that fits in, in the future. The other one, 87, is effective July 1st of 2020. This deals with leases. So, we'll have to evaluate leases next year to make sure that they, they work into that. I'm not sure if we're leasing anything, copiers or...
We are, we are not currently leasing any.
Ta-da! That's your audit. You guys did awesome this year. I was not part of the audit team. The other two members, my partner and the manager, had other engagements tonight, so unfortunately, you got stuck with me. But I asked them both how it went. They said it went great this year. And there were some issues last year with preparedness. Those were corrected this year, and that was a big thing. I wanted to make sure I stressed that those were corrected. Everything was done timely and prepared for them, and very accurately. Tammy did a great job. So, thanks to Tammy and her staff.
Her staff.
Yep. Who worked, who worked hard to get that ready for us. We appreciate it.
We appreciate it as well.
And Tammy is not here. She is actually on vacation, because she's been working almost seven days a week. Has been transitioning different people in the position, so she's visiting your daughter.
Well, thanks a lot, and thank you.
Any other questions I can answer for? Well, thank you very much for your interest. We appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
I just have two last closing comments is, when you look at this, it is expected that, for my angle, when we budget, do not spend everything. You know, think about your own budget, your forecast, if you allocate X number of dollars for utilities, and X number of dollars for food. You don't know exactly what you want, but you wanna stay within your budget. So, at the end of the month, there should be a little left in that account, which is what we've been doing. When we do at the end of the year, kind of a freeze and only ask needed purchases, so we can roll it out. That has saved us and got us down to only about $61,000 of using the fund balance. The other thing I wanna point out, it's in the food service. There is $120,000 of a fund balance there. That is a self-sustaining organization or program. We purchase all the equipment that we need to replace out of that, so it does not tap into the general fund. So, that has been a plus in how we finance the district.
Thank you. Moving on, our school improvement update.
Moving on, our school improvement updates. We'll start with Lee, Mr. Poston.
Hey, good evening, everyone. So for this update, for the elementary, I kind of focused a little bit on some of the professional development and some of the focus we're doing on our curriculum. So just a reminder, we thought about this at a previous board meeting. School improvement goals for the elementary, students will become proficient readers, they will become proficient writers, and improve their math proficiency. So this presentation will focus on the readers and the writers aspect. One thing that kind of brought from the last presentation I did was what are we doing with those new teachers who haven't been training CITW? So working with MACOM ISD. We have five teachers who have not gone through the formal training of CITW. So there's training starting in January, and those staff members will be signed up to be able to go to that. So we'll make sure that they're up to date and have all of that that we've been working on with all of our staff members. In September, we had our grade level PD, where each grade met with myself for approximately half a day for about three hours. And beginning in September, really looked at the information that teachers just got from the students. In September, they had brand new students, they know very little about the students, they've had some conversations. But once we continued in the fall, NWBA, they're able to take some time, analyze some of that data so they can get to know those students. That's one of the main focuses we have at the beginning of the year, for the teachers to spend some time, get to know their students academically. So we spent time reviewing and analyzing NWBA, and then we looked at M-Step data. So with the fourth grade teachers, this year's fourth grade teachers, we shared the last year's data with their students, who are now current fifth grade students, and we looked at third grade students, who are their current students in fourth grade. So fourth grade, that's look at both different pieces of M-Step data. During that time, able to identify learning gaps. So we can see where students are, where they need to be, looked at common assessments in the grade levels, and looked at learning continuums. That's a piece of NWA report that shows what the students are ready to learn and where we can continue to move them forward in their learning. Our main focus for this year is looking at balanced literacy, something that's been taught for several years, but we felt as a staff, we need to refocus a little bit on it, look at some of the key points to it. So this diagram, this is part of the balanced literacy. So looking at the read allowance, shared reading, interactive reading, guided reading, and then the independent reading, and then the side, the writing aspect, the write allowance, shared writing, interactive writing, guided writing, and independent writing. So these are all what makes up balanced literacy.
And everyone's doing this?
Yes. That's quite where we are during walkthroughs, observations, our staff PD today. We're looking at what areas are used most by staff. Our school improvement team did a survey activity where teachers got to look and say, you know, I use this on a regular basis, I use this occasionally, or I rarely use this. So we can kind of get an area where we need to focus on this. Because as we talk about balanced literacy, we need to do all these for a certain amount of time in classes. We are currently working with the MISD literacy coaches. Their team has come out, they've met with every grade level. In the morning part of it, they observe classrooms, observe the teaching and student learning, and then in the afternoon, they do the coaching, share some things that they've observed, and have those professional conversations with the grade level teams. So through that, what we looked at is kindergarten, first grade, focused on phonetic awareness and read allowance. So those are the two main things looking at to start with. And then second grade, looking at the guided reading that the teachers do with the small groups in the class. And third and fourth grades, focused on guided reading and depth of knowledge. So looking at this diagram of depth of knowledge, is there a lot of questions? They're at level one, which is kind of easy to recall, reiterating the facts they learned. But moving towards that depth of knowledge level two and three, that has some more of the thinking, have the students be able to rationalize and explain how they get to the answers they need to. Depth of knowledge four, that's when there's a lot more projects involved. So we definitely want to move to the depth of knowledge two and three, and working towards four also. So once again, these are just the initial thoughts that we discussed, some initial areas that we felt that the grade levels of teachers focus on these specific areas that then really help move students where they need to go and just enrich the learning a little bit more. One thing we also discussed is using common vocabulary, common strategies, K through four. So it's easier when students move from grade level to grade level, they're hearing the same things, same strategies, same way. So one is word solving strategies. So these are bookmarks that each teacher got for every student in the class. So as the reading, if they get to a part where they don't know the word, have trouble, stumble a little bit, instead of, you know, natural reaction for students are, okay, on their way to someone gives me the answer, whether it's the students sitting next to me, we can kind of yell it out, or a teacher, you know, kind of guiding through. So these are some strategies that students can do on their own to help increase their word solving strategies. So once again, each student has one of these that they can use, each grade level, so it's that common language that's used. Next is the K through three, reading comprehension strategies. Even though this chart says K through three, this was given and will be used by fourth grade also. So once again, as they're trying to comprehend a passage, a text that they've read, there's some strategies that you can use to make sure that they understand. This is a big piece of the M-Step where they're doing text to text, read this text, read another text, now get answers, compare the two, see how they can pull the information with the two different kinds of texts. We are already having the ISD, the coaches, a lot of the staff members, a lot of the grade levels ask, can they come up, can they model this, can they meet with us again and help us with this? So we've arranged a couple of dates for them to come out and do some additional follow and some additional coaching per the request of the teachers and per specific areas that they want to see. So that's our main focus that we're working on as we're looking into, you know, those proficient readers, proficient writers, a lot of our focus this year will be on the balanced literacy. So each presentation, I'll update on what we've been working on, what strategies we're working on, and what we're doing in case of the balanced literacy part. Any questions?
Thank you. Mr. Bertels.
I did print out a hard copy of Mr. Bertels because I think there was a name that was slapped off, so the other copy is the same, it's just the name.
I'm going to start by saying that, you know, a few months ago, we came up here and went over our school improvement goals. And when we have our goals, I felt that we should go over the process. So I took this concept, an idea of presenting back to my co-chairs and Mr. Burkmeyer, and the four of us came up with what we're going to talk about tonight and then moving forward on what we're going to talk about. First of all, our team, I have two excellent co-chairs, Mrs. May and Mrs. Krampton. Mrs. May is here, she's going to come up here in a second. Mrs. Krampton was going to be here tonight as well, but she's not feeling well. Myself, and Mr. Burkmeyer, Ms. Holman, Mr. Clendenna, and Mrs. Gillespie, and Mrs. Jones is our core team. So what Mrs. May, Mrs. Krampton, myself, and Mr. Burkmeyer said and thought was, if we go over the process of what we go through, and then from that, each month, go over the activities and the strategies and the maybe gritty of what we come up with through those meetings, just to kind of give you an overview of what this process is like. So Mrs. May.
Not as loud as I thought. That's good for her. So yeah, as Mr. Bertels was sharing, we wanted to just give you guys an overview of what we do throughout the year as a school improvement team, what the idea is for school improvement. And then he'll give you more details each month about what we're doing within our building. So go back, one screen. Up here is the continuous school improvement picture that we see every time we go to the ISD and we talk about school improvement. We're gathering data, we're studying it, we're making a plan, we're doing it, we're gathering data, we're doing, you know, it's like it's a continuous circle of evaluation of where we're at. So our process, we have co-chairs in our administration, we go to the facilitators for school improvement meetings at the ISD. We meet four times a year. We meet once in the fall, twice in the winter time, and once in the spring. So that is an organization that all of the school improvement chairs go to at the county level. So we get information from them, updates, and it's a really good time. And then we all get together in May to finalize our plan. Our team, our building team, we meet once a month. We also, so we have our team meetings once a month, but then each person on the team is going back to all of the staff and talking about, this is where we're at, this is what we're doing, sharing back. So there's a lot of unofficial meetings as well. So in the fall, when we get together, we are looking back at the plan that we did that we wrote in the springtime. So we're pulling that back out, making sure that we are on board with what we had written, we remember, we're sharing that back out to our staff, so that this is our picture, this is where we're going this year. We have an emphasis on classroom instruction networks. We've been trained in our, with our staff for many years now, we've been working on this, and it's a gigantic strategy. And so we've been focusing in on a couple of them each year to really get better at each of them. And so we really dial in on a couple each year to get better. And then we have a program eval process, so we have chosen to evaluate the CITW program. Program evaluation is something that the state asks us to do, but it's good practice anyway. So we take a look at what are we doing with CITW? And we're talking about how are we going to collect data, how are we going to evaluate our, is this making a difference? So we talk about, how are we going to collect data for the year and start planning that process? And then what pieces we're going to use. So we decided that we're going to evaluate CITW again, but it's not like we reopen it each year, whether we want to use CITW or do we want to evaluate a different strategy.
Mrs. May, when you say the CITW, when you dial in on something and that's what you work on, what does that mean exactly? There's different components?
Yeah, there are several different components of CITW. So for example, setting objectives and using student-friendly language for what the state standard is, is a piece of it. So on all the boards everywhere, we've got a target on the whiteboard, and so the teachers are writing out the ICAN statement. So the students know exactly, this is what my lesson is, this is what we're focusing in on. So that's like one element of CITW.
Right. So when you say we dial in on it, but the whole, that focus, we've been doing that for a long time.
Right.
Yeah, that would be like, that, like the learning targets and some of the objectives, that was five, six years ago. So there's nine specific elements.
Okay. So when we say, when we say we're dialing in, like, not particularly that thing because we've already been doing that, it's something else we haven't been focusing on that we're learning. We dial in for that one year, and that's what we do in our building, that's what you're talking about, not the writing on the board.
Yeah. So the goal, really, you know, like, we learned the whole program, and so we're doing our best to do the whole program. But each year, focus in on a couple to say, okay, are we really doing this the best way we can? So once we've spent a year or two dialing in on it, then it's a norm that's expected, and we add another piece.
Yeah, those are not the ones.
Okay.
Thank you.
Another thing that we bring to our fall meeting is any updates that we got from the ISD at the state level, any changes that the state is doing. So, and then the winter, oh, before we get to the winter, this is just a quick overview of the program evaluation tool that I was talking about, they call it the PET. So we take a look at the impact, choose the strategy that we're going to evaluate for the next year. We revisit our school improvement plan, the SIP, and amend activities, and then make a plan to implement. So it's part of that whole continuous process.
A good example there, to maybe further answer the question, is cooperative learning is one of the strategies. And a lot of people think just by putting kids in groups and having them work together, that's cooperative learning. And so the first year that we looked at that was three years ago, and last year was our second year, because when we went through this program and studied the two lessons that were turned in, had the student survey on the cooperative learning, had the teacher survey on the cooperative learning, we felt that we weren't given it justice, and we needed more training and more work on it through this process. So we choose two a year, but we chose that one two straight years, along with another one, because we felt we didn't get to where we should be at.
So in the winter, we are gathering information on how we're doing as a staff through our CITW, through other things that, you know, we're working on. We've added a different grading system this year, so we're gathering info on that, too. So we're gathering info and data, checking in, like, are we doing the things that we want to be doing? Do we need to change course? Do we need to reteach anything? So it's just more of like a check-in as we're gathering things to make sure that we're on course, or do we need to adjust anything as we're going? And then we complete the school systems review, which is the comprehensive needs assessment piece. So we're just checking in, like, that's a, it's a tool that the school, or the state gives us, it's like a rubric that we're filling in, how we feel like we're doing. And then in the spring, we're writing our goals for the next year, which get presented to you guys annually. We're evaluating our program for the year and completing that program eval tool.
And the comprehensive needs assessment, the state says that we no longer have to report to them our results of that, but we still do it. And because it's very valuable, we found it to be a very valuable rubric to let us know what path we're going down. So we still do it each year.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Castle, I just want to follow, you had mentioned, or they had mentioned about facilitaries of school improvement. All of our buildings attend that, on different days, but take the school improvement process out of it, one of the things that we're faced with in all school districts is the state's moving targets for compliance. And so that's an opportunity that our staff have, what is it the state's looking for? What format are they looking for? If they roll out a new system, we have to report into it. That's a piece, part of the facilitaries of school improvement. Mr. Castle?
Good. All right. Good evening. This is the high school's school improvement update. So in the high school this year, we're focusing on building positive and trusted relationships with our students, with both, this is Warwick and I being due to the building, that was one of our priorities, and we wanted to get to it off the bat. At the Bridgewater High School, we will closely monitor our students' attendance, academics, and behavioral needs in order to provide for each student's individual needs. It's our goal to make sure that we provide an individualized response to any student that may need our assistance at Bridgewater High School.
As a whole staff?
Correct. Yes, yes. Sorry. At the high school, our professional development... At the high school, our professional development meetings this year, we're focusing on identifying the student needs, again, academic and social, and right up the bat, the school improvement team's focus is identifying our students' strengths and weaknesses. So the way that we're doing that is by critically analyzing testing data for the gaps in instruction and knowledge. We're using the N W V A, we're using the P S A T, and we're using the S A T data, and so we're using our professional development time to look at that testing data, to find out if and where there are gaps in instruction, and then coming up with a diagnosis and trying to fill those gaps. One of the ways we've done that so far, this last November 2nd, we had a all math half-day at the high school, so we utilized the entire half-day for nothing but math instruction at the high school. We kind of do a non-traditional schedule, we broke it up into four different 45-minute sessions, and every single teacher, regardless of their certification, was in charge of a group of freshmen, sophomores, and juniors, and they guided those students through a 45-minute math little mini lesson. And the cool part about it is that we had senior leaders in that, so our math teachers in our math department identified 19, 19 high-level seniors to help deliver that instruction to some of our freshmen, sophomores, and juniors in the class. And the subject areas were identified through the examination of our testing data, so our school set down, we broke down the data, and we found where our gaps in instruction were in mathematics. Our math department developed four different individual mini lessons based on those gaps in instructions, and then we developed the lessons to help fill those gaps during the day. And then, the seniors have the blast teaching some of that, so we get some teachers, you know, the feedbacks were positive, the kids came back and they wanted to know how they were as teachers. And then it was also interesting to see some of our teachers, our traditional math teachers kind of up there, a little bit out of their comfort zone, teaching math for the first time in probably 20 or 30 years, so, pretty interesting. Our SAT prep alignment also, we're developing, you know, we're constantly tweaking that, because as we continue with our SAT prep, the farther we go into the year, we're finding that there may be something that our students either missed, or they forgot, so it's a constant, constant adjustment. You can't just say, this is what we're gonna teach, and we're not gonna adjust that, because that wouldn't cater to our students' needs. And then moving forward, we're gonna continue to examine all aspects of our curriculum and alignment, both horizontally or horizontally and vertically, so where our freshmen are coming over from the middle school, and also our students coming in and transferring from other schools, and then going from teacher to teacher horizontally in the high school. The culture and climate, you know, one of the things that we're really focused on is getting to know our students, and making sure that we are meeting their, not only economic, but social needs. So the entire staff is focused on the morning greetings, meeting our students as they come in the building, and giving that temperature gauge on our students, and how they're feeling, and what we can do to help them. Handshake conversation, just as our students come in the room, just a quick handshake, you know, welcome to class today, how are you today, you know, doing more of the dis-sit service, really listening to them, and seeing how they're doing. Social contracts in the classrooms that our students have developed, along with our teachers. The after-school availability, if you come into Bridgeton High School after school, a lot of days you wouldn't know when school ended, because we have so many teachers that are still here on their own time after school, and students walking the hallways, getting to their classrooms, getting that extra help that they need. And then communication and announcements, we're really focused on trying to get on the school passenger, on the P A announcements, and giving the message out to our students and our parents that we have things going on at the high school.
Would you give us an example of social contract?
Sure, so, when we went to school, the teacher would come in, and the teacher would have their set of rules, and these were the teacher's set of rules, and you follow those set of rules, or else you got sent to the assistant principal's office. What we found, and what a lot of the school studies have found, especially the capturing kids' hearts model, shows that a teacher can have their set of non-negotiables, and every teacher's gonna have, these are the things that I have to have in the classroom, these are the things I'm gonna go by. But they found that students, when they develop those social contracts themselves, they take ownership in it, and they're more likely to follow it, adhere to it, and actually hold each other to it. So the teachers went in that first week, and they developed, okay, here are my two or three non-negotiables that I'm gonna have in my classroom, but then the teachers, you know, ask for student input, how do you want this classroom to look? How do you want this classroom to feel? How do you want each other to be treated? How do you want to speak to each other? And they develop those social contracts, and now the students have developed that ownership, and they follow that in the classrooms.
Great, thank you.
Attendance is also a big focus of our school improvement team, it's monitored on a daily basis, many times hourly. Students with repeated accidents and tardies, we have face-to-face conversations with them, so it's in real time. So, we're pulling up in the office the attendance two, three times a day, if we notice that a student is having an issue on a certain day, the conversation is hung with the student before they leave that day. It's, we're not waiting until the end of the week, we're not waiting until the end of the month, it's why were you late two times today, why did you miss second hour? And if it's something that we can help them with, like they didn't have a ride to school, or they're not feeling well today, then we help them. It's not always a punitive response, it's see what we can do to help them. Again, individualized solutions and incentives are offered for each student. The goal is to be proactive instead of reactive with this, and we really focused on getting the students to understand that every minute counts, because those minutes, you know, add up to the hours, which add up to the days and weeks. For the daily announcements, there's a message at the end of every announcement stating that, that every second counts at Bridgeton High School, and we know that for them. The number of tardy students has steadily decreased over the last month, and something that we're really proud of. This last Friday, we got it down to only 3% of our students were tardy during the day, and the majority of that were first hour, which we're focusing on trying to get the message out to the parents now, because a lot of our younger kids said, you know, don't ride the bus, and don't walk, it's hard to get mad at a 14, 15-year-old, and it's not their fault, so the message is out, you know, getting it out to the parents, that it's important. Behavior, again, be proactive, reviewing behavior issues of the past, and putting a plan of action in. So, the school improvement team is using our time to focus on identifying students who had behavioral issues in the past, seeing what the antecedents of that were, trying to develop a plan of action for those students, and move forward from there. We're using it all hands on deck. We're up at the high school, it's not just the administrator's responsibility to handle behavioral issues, it's the teachers, the counselors, social workers, custodians, everybody in this building's responsibility is to build those relationships with the students, and to help them get what they need. Our PDIS, weekly, we have our Code Blue and Moment of Excellence, where we identify those students and publicly reward them. And then the use of the restorative justice model for students that do have behavior issues, it's making sure that the relationships are repaired, if there is a damaged relationship between two students, two teachers, student teachers, whatever that's gonna be, we don't want those to linger.
Do you, do you have any, many of them? Have you been doing them, and who does them? You know, like, I don't want to say the person that's in charge, but who's the person that's guiding that meeting?
The restorative justice?
Yeah.
That's what it's been, Ms. Warwick and I. And eventually, the idea is to have several others that are trained in this, but there's a specific model and a specific program that's gotta be done, so I'm using my experience that I've had in the past in building that, because we don't want the small problems to linger and continue to fester and turn into bigger problems, so it's been my experience to get, you know, the issue in the room out in the air and clear. Academically, you know, what we're here for most importantly, is the use of the E W Is, the early warning indicators within our power school program, to identify at-risk students as soon as possible, because again, it doesn't do any good to wait till the end of a market period to identify students that have any trouble, by then it's too late. So these are checked weekly to see if there's a student who has issues, the, sorry, C S team, probably, like, student, study team, child study team. We've used these to review the effectiveness of our interventions, so we put the interventions in place, but we also have to follow up and see how those interventions are doing with our students, with them. The teacher conversations and parent communications are important, so we're continuing to encourage our staff and holding them to the expectation that they're making those phone calls, having those conversations with the students, again, before it is too late. Identifying specific weaknesses and gaps in student achievement, and then applying the measures. Again, the math day we had there, again, and we have several pictures, I'll be putting those up on Facebook, but it was interesting to have our 17 and 18-year-olds, sometimes they'll be leading the discussion, and then we awarded two gift certificates at the end of the day for our students who participated and got full marks in all their classes, you know, so you had to go around from class to class, and you had to have a sign sheet that says you participated, and you were actively learning in those classes, and gave those away. So, we are extraordinarily busy at Bridgeton High School, and we should be our best.
Thank you.
I just want to follow with, just as a point of reference for the board, you know, at some point, because you're dealing with high school credits, a student gets to a point with certain interventions that are in place, that it's possible that they may not be a graduate or pass that class. What I want, what I want to commend Mr. Castle and this board on, and it's really looking at that proactive nature, they've done this, at least probably three students that I can think of off the top of my head, coming with an alternate plan now, to keep them on track to, obviously pass the class and hopefully graduate these successes. So, we're trying to do some non-traditional approaches, and I see more of that coming, especially, we're gonna be talking, we'll get to the handbooks, changing so much to allow more flexibility to keep a student in a successful path.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next, we've got our baseball overnight trip to Florida. Mr. Evans is back there.
So Mr. Evans walks up, you have the right up, a lot of the Mr. Evans's same parents.
I apologize, I don't know why they're looking here.
He had it in on time. Basically, the synopsis is, every spring, it's been a big issue about having games over Easter vacation, it's created a lot of animosity, between, unneeded animosity between parents and coaches, and ultimately, it's a parent-driven idea. A lot of schools do it, a lot of the top-tier Catholic League, Class A schools, Division One schools do it. I've talked about it, doing it, and I've asked the parent, the R B I group, my parents, to come up with an idea, and they came up with an idea, and it's working. It's basically, they're paying, they're going on vacation with their families, we're practicing baseball down there for five days. There's no cost to any of the district, there's no cost to the, to the, my activities account, the field is gonna be paid for by R B I. As the state's right now, Michigan High School Athletic Association allows you to go to those states to practice, you cannot play a game, they're presently under consideration in November to allow you to scrimmage in Florida. That is not allowed right now, you can scrimmage, inner squad scrimmage, but you can't scrimmage on our team. In the future, Mr. Yule, who's now the new presence for Mr. Roberts, he believes that there's enough momentum that they're gonna allow that to happen, and it's gonna be retroactive, so we could do it this year. So, Mr. Nettles and several of the parents got together, they found a place in St. Pete's. We are not staying all together, every parent is staying at their own location, their own hotel, kids will come to the field, at 8 o'clock in the morning, we'll practice for a few hours, and then they'll be released back to their parents. Again, I'm not chaperoning anyone, parents are in charge of their own kids, just gives us another alternative. Kids, we have eight seniors on the team that are returning, that if they make the team, six of them are already committed to go to the seniorship to Mexico, so there are kids that are gonna be on the team that aren't gonna go. We have about 25, the numbers keep growing. We have 25 kids through the whole entire program, from freshman on up, that are going. We're gonna plan on practicing them all down there, I know myself, Coach Simmons, Mr. Jones, and a couple of parents are gonna help us run some practices down there. It's, it's really kinda nice, some parents are mad because we're not all staying together, maybe next year we might wanna stay in the same hotel, I'm not sure, but right now, everyone's just on their own. And kids that cannot afford to go, if there's a problem with finances, when they can't, they're not penalized for not going, our J D coach, Mr. Tabano, and our pitching coach, Mr. Radzinski, who was varsity coach, and Mr. Folskay, our freshman coach, are gonna stay back and practice with the kids during the week. For the board members that don't know, we usually play over Easter, during all that bad weather, we try to play as many games as we can, with the teams, with seniors are all, a lot of seniors do go on the trip, so I just bring up J D kids and play with J D kids varsity games to give us more experience. But that's kind of the synopsis of what the plan is. Their itinerary is to practice from Monday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday down there.
So it's not mandatory?
Not mandatory.
If you can't come, you can't come.
Not a big deal.
That's held against you.
Correct.
So, how does the tryouts, because you do your tryouts, at what point, where does that fall into your tryouts, and then when you're going on spring break?
Correct, so, in the letter that we sent out to all parents, that anyone that we could know that might be trying out from freshman on up, it states in there that this is all predicated on if you make the team.
So we have tryouts first?
Yeah, tryouts occur March 11th through the 15th, and this trip is the first week of April. And that's kind of, in the statement, when we met with all the parents, we had a great meeting with, all the parents were there, we told them, like, this is all, generally, we haven't cut in a long time, kids dismiss themselves. I give them the option of their role, their role on the team, and most, some kids don't like the role, and then they don't wanna play, but knock on wood, it hasn't happened, we haven't had to cut anybody in a long time.
And then what, where does, where does that fall, because you do, you have played those games, whether Kitten Row, years back, whatever, so you'll have less games that you're playing, because you're not gonna play any games before, that's gonna adjust your schedule, or what is that?
No, we have, we probably have, I think, three or four games before we leave.
Oh, okay.
The state allows you 33 games, and you can get them in at any time, you can back them up, you can put them in, you have an infinite number of days to do it.
So it doesn't affect your playing, your game schedule at all?
No.
You're just gonna take that week instead of play games, go practice? Anybody have any questions?
Again, it's no cost to the district. R B I has been gave the field, the minimum, it's like 300 bucks a field.
But my, my other question, and I have talked to Mr. Walmsley, what our responsibility by, as the board, by saying, yes, baseball team can go do this, when you're practicing, you are responsible for them there, and so is the school district?
They will.
Correct?
During the practice time, that's what, that's what the board next week would, would...
That's why it's going here.
From our liability, or that's what we're looking for. Now, once they leave the practice, and they're with their moms and dads and doing their, we're not responsible for that. Only during the structured time that the team's designated, so it's 8 to 10, or 8 to 12, that's the time we're responsible.
There's no difference if we're practicing from 8 to 11.
Correct.
Right, and that's why, you know, our policy states, overnight, we go overnight, and that's why when this came up, when they approached Mr. Ryan Harden and Mr. Walmsley, Brian wanted to have them come to us, because the coaches are responsible for them during that practice time. You're right, just the same as if you were here, but that's what we're saying, if we say okay...
That's what Setseg is gonna look at, if the board take action.
It's us saying it's okay to practice with kids in Florida, that's, that's basically what we're saying.
So no liability held for transportation to get there, transportation to come back?
During the time that Scott or the coaches say, this is the time, you need to be here, you need to get here at this point, that's what, that's what Setseg is looking for.
And the coaches wouldn't be chaperoning any other time outside of practice?
They're with their families, nothing to do with any of that. There's no, we haven't planned any events or anything like that. Parents are upset, because we're spread apart, they wanna be together, but we're all spread up to St. Pete's, it's so expensive to go down there, we're an hour away.
So this is the first year you've done this?
Yeah, very, I, background, I had originally canceled it, because there was so much work involved, and I didn't realize the volume of legwork involved, and the parent says, hey, what do you wanna do, I says, well, then you guys need to take charge. And so the R B I, a couple of the parents who stepped forward, and found us the field, and found us the other schools, that's, they got the information for us.
And the R B I is the 501(c)(3) group that supports your program, for those that...
I'm a policy guy.
That's okay.
We have parent groups of 501(c)(3), it's called the Richmond Baseball Initiative, that has their own board and everything.
And they've pretty much put this together for you.
The whole thing, yes, I've done none of it, I'm gonna be honest with you, zero.
You have to pay for it, yeah.
Yeah, the letter was written by Brad Nettles, okayed by, who was a part of the board, and everything was done, none of our decisions are made, by me is made by them, I go to them and ask them for their input, similar to how you go.
Anybody? Okay, thanks. Now, we, this is, for our schedule, this is the meeting where we hear a presentation, and then in two weeks, we'll be back on the agenda for an action item. You don't have to come back to the meeting if you don't want to, Mr. Walmsley will let you know, but the board, if the board members do have any questions, at some point they'll ask Mr. Walmsley, and he'll get ahold of you. ask Mr. Walsley, he'll get ahold of you. If something comes up from, you know, after we start thinking about it for...
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Reinhardt, High School Gymnasium Scoreboard.
I am here to present what I would like to do with our scoreboards, if it'll come along. Oh, you're changing it, okay.
You may have assigned it, will we present? I'm sorry, I should probably tag it out.
I can hold up the pictures if you want for those audience.
Connecting. Just a few more seconds with Jeopardy music.
Let me pull it on, all right?
Sure, you can.
Hold it up on something. There we go.
All right, and the reason I wanted to bring this before you today is we are experiencing some issues with our current scoreboards in Richmond High School Main Gymnasium. I have called the maintenance department several times on the scoreboards, I've changed the cables that connect the scoreboards, I've done, done many things to them, but we are still having some issues with them, they're going off during games, light bulbs are going out, they are, the horn is going off, and it's blinking red lights, so it looks like there's going to be some major issues to repair in the near future. So, what I'm presenting to you today, this is a company that I learned about in an athletic director conference a couple of years ago called Side Effects. This company finds local companies that would like to advertise, and they ask them to commit to the advertisements, and they purchase the equipment for you through the monies that are given to them with the advertising groups. Once they have enough advertisers, they pay off the scoreboards, and they ship them to you. So, it takes about four to six weeks in the process, and the only thing that the district would have to, or the only thing that is not fundraised, is the installation cost, which is about $2,000. Down below, you can see a couple pictures of our brand-new scoretable, if you have been to an athletic event in the gym. It's an LED scoretable, and it changes the advertisements, and there's a few other screens where I can do some pretty cool things with an HDMI cable and a laptop, so it's a very nice scoretable that was also brought to us through Side Effects.
Just to follow, the reason why this is coming to the board is there is a board policy that said any permanent or semi-permanent structure must have board approval, so that's why the scoreboard is coming to you rather than the scoretable.
So, this is what, when the final project is complete, an idea of what the scoreboard will look like, with advertisements above and below it, which I'll be able to show you the renderings here in a second. The advertisements will be above and below the scoreboard, and all of the advertisements that will be posted on the wall in the gym will be approved by me before they're finalized and able to put up in the gym. This is a rendering of what the scoreboards will look like when they're completed, they are top-of-the-line, they're Dactronic scoreboards, similar to our scoreboard that's outside on the football field, and you can see where the advertisements will go once the scoreboard is completed. You can see, I told them that they couldn't cover up our Richmond Go Blue logo, so they had an idea of putting the advertisement boards next to the logo. So, that's what it might look like when it is completed.
The advertising, you, it says platinum on that, so is that, if I, if I do that, then I get that forever, I pay that?
Yes, yes.
It's a forever advertising, okay.
So, once, one thing I forgot to mention is, once the scoreboards are, are paid off, Side Effects and Richmond Athletics split the revenue that comes in through the advertisements. So, once those boards are paid off, and the revenue is still coming in, we split that, that with Side Effects.
Am I paying every year?
I'm sorry, what?
Is it a one-time payment?
Is it a one-time payment, or I'm paying...
It's a three-year deal for, for each company.
Oh, got it. Three years, it could be different advertisers or something.
Yes.
Or I can renew?
Or you could renew. And the platinum, the gold, and the silver are, is the amount of money that that group is paying. So, if you're paying more money, obviously, it gets a larger sign.
So, you said after the scoreboard's paid off, then we split the advertising?
We split the, the money is coming in with Side Effects, yes.
And that roughly, what period of time do you think before we have the...
The contract is, I'm going to, I'm going to guess it's about three to five years, but the contract with Side Effects is 10 years long, so...
And they work to get this, the advertising?
They do all the advertising, they find local groups first, so they're going to ask me which groups I feel they should ask first, and I give them a list, and then they go out and find others if, if those groups aren't willing.
Others within the community?
Yes, within the community. Everything is in, within the community.
Everything's community, Richmond advertising.
So, you said, did you say 10-year?
It's a 10-year contract with Side Effects, yes.
And so, repairs on the, so once this is...
Once the cost of the scoreboards is paid off through the advertisements, then we split it with Side Effects, we split the revenue.
So, any repairs on the board don't come out of that?
It can.
Oh.
So, if there are any repairs, we can use some of that, the fundraised monies to pay off the cost of the repairs.
Where does that fundraised money go?
I would recommend the board put in the HS, it's either 105 or 104.
105.
The athletic internal.
Internal.
But, that's what makes sense, because those funds then help benefit the athletic program.
So, where in the, where in the contract does it talk about fixing things? You know, if something gets, you know, where it says, who pays for it?
Number nine, and we're at the school, company school recognizes that a timely installation, sponsorship, and maintenance of equipment, that's such as installing, adds a maintaining, ensure proper, the school's sort of response to cost associated with installation and maintenance. So, when the scoreboard is repaired...
So, it's us?
It's us, but the revenue that we would put into that internal account would be where the repair would come out. So, we're not using general fund to repair.
If we set aside.
If we set aside. If we say that as a board, you want to go down this road, and when you think it's paid off, and the revenue that we receive is going into this, then when Chris gets the maintenance bill, it's coming out of that account to pay for it, rather than, currently, it's coming out of a general fund operation.
Do we have any idea how long we've had the existing scoreboard? Yeah, I was going to ask that.
Ninety-six.
I would say it's probably divided in ninety-six when that, because it was redone.
And is there any type of warranty that comes with this board?
Great question. I'd have to look and research Dactronics to find out.
After 10 years, we get all the money?
After 10 years, the, the revenue would stop coming in from the fundraiser, fundraiser boards. That's something we would have to renew, and I'd have to sit down with them, yes.
Is, is the advertising a digital advertising, or is it like a sticker decal it puts in as...
There's, there are like sticker decals, signs almost, you could see it in the, in the slideshow that I showed you of the board.
I will look into it, but I, I would believe that after that 10 years, they're stopping the stickers, and if we want to sell that advertising, then we have to put the sticker off.
Then it would go to us.
And we would put that, that we are on.
Do you want to answer to your question, only if I have to use this? How long the current is?
How long the warranty is?
Yeah, I mean, it's worth knowing the answer. Question, and we should help answer.
Do we have warranty? Any other questions?
Is there any information about how much the board actually costs? Do you know that?
It's $10,400, I believe, I gave Mr. Walsley, and I can't remember how much else, I don't mind. That's for the two boards, yes, for both.
And when are we hoping to have them?
As soon as the master agreement's signed, it's four to six weeks to have the boards built.
So, let's assume the board takes action, and a positive on the 26th, you're probably talking two weeks into January, when arrival, and let's assume while they make it, they're going to seek advertising.
Did the boards go up even if they don't have all the advertisement?
No, they'll complete the advertisements before the board has even sent, so they'll, so that they can be put up at the same time as the board.
Okay.
Does it say how much each level of sponsorship is? Does that outline somewhere?
It is, but I don't have that information.
I just wonder how much we're asking businesses for, I mean, we, businesses do a lot around here, I just wonder how much we're asking for, if it's reasonable or...
I'll give you that number, then we can put it in the weekly newsletter, shoot you an email.
Good?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, auditorium lighting bid.
In your packet, you'll see the specs, this is purchased, or recommended, we purchased through bond dollars. We originally sent the bid out in early August. As I explained, through just life and the course of events, we held off awarding it. We ended up rebidding it with the idea of adding some sound systems to it. When we rebid the, there were three vendors that applied, you'll see Fantasy Lighting, who has been working with us for a lot of, they did this, the lighting in the board currently in the auditorium. The other company was, sorry, Coben Lake Sales, and Vincent Lighting System, those are the three companies. So, later on in the board meeting, I was, I'm asking you to approve the purchase of auditorium lighting, so that we can get that started and installed, because it will take time. The current low bid is Fantasy Lighting, it's approximately $46,665 as a total. The bid later on will ask for a 10% contingency, because I don't know, once you start pulling down the old stuff, sometimes you run into some site conditions that... But it's within the budget that we allocated for the serious rebound of what we were allocated towards the auditorium. That's a little less than...
So, we've been happy with them?
I've had no issues with them, they have been very good at responding if we had issues, providing whatever training that we need.
There's just a significant difference between, financially, between their bid and... Is that, is that a typical gap? I don't remember having that big of a gap between.
And, we have had, when we first bid out the, the systems, Fantasy did not bid, but we had a gap between $45,000 and $65,000 were the two numbers, the first, but so $20,000. Now, we're about $14,000 in differences, because we had some of the sound system. Some vendors chose to come, we offer a walk-through, so they can actually see the facilities, some chose to bid at sight unseen, so they're, they're estimating probably on the high end, not knowing what they're in for. Fantasy was one that actually came out and looked at the site, walked the scaffolding, and made sure, we catwalked, and made sure they understood what, what it entailed.
And they've done work here before?
They have done work, yes. They installed the sound system and the, there's another lights they fixed.
On the stage?
We did, they wanted, they wanted the stage, we had them do, they know they did the sound system, and there was one other project they did, and they're on the line, I'll tell them, I can get that to you.
And the idea behind presenting tonight and taking action is so that this can get up and going, so the performances that are happening in January can have the new lighting?
Correct, it will not be in time for the holiday production. The lighting is, the bulbs burn out, and it's, it uses a lot of power to run the current system. This is an LED system, so we're going to save an electrical cost there, as well as the maintenance of the lighting.
And this would also be an update of a system that's been there since...
It was built in ninety-six.
Ninety-six.
Right. The original lighting system.
Right.
Any other questions? Snow plowing, removal, and salting on mowing and athletic field painting services.
Okay, in your packet, you will see, we have, we had a two-year contract this past, the last two years with Stafford, part of that, it was with Delia's. We typically go up the bid every two years, and the last, the board approved it, the last time you had authorized me to extend it, if I felt there was a need to extend it. Based on some of the situations we've had over the last two years, I chose to bid it. In the last packet, or the quotes, you'll see, from a grass-cutting perspective, we're talking $32 a week difference between the two, it's nothing significant, but you will see a difference in snow plowing, Delia's actually comes in cheaper in multiple cases where we have, where we're plowing all three areas, roads, parking lots, and sidewalks. They come, and that, you know, we had, for instance, just the other day, I had salting in the plows come out. That, the other day, would have been a $990 plow for the district at one time. So, it's a little cheaper on Delia's, so when you look at, we typically use them more. From the athletic end, we've had never an issue with Delia's on the striping, there were some issues that Mr. Reinhardt has worked with Staffords on, getting athletic striping. So, at this point, at the next board meeting, I will be making a recommendation to approve one of the two companies we're recommending to the board. I don't know if there was any board comments, or based on your experience and what you might have heard, my recommendation would be to go with Delia's.
Hey, Brian, I'm just curious, when we had Delia's before, does this bid compare to what we paid them previously?
It is slightly higher, but not much. So, we're talking two years ago, that's pretty much held their cost. Some of the things I, I, you know, from Delia's, that, that would be a charge that Stafford wouldn't be, was if gas goes over $4 a gallon, there's a 3%, which the others didn't. But when you look at, you know, cleaning up soccer fields, and it says down at the bottom of the cost, and that was a per-event, striping, or garbage pickup, I could tell you that, you know, I don't, I typically have never had to make a call to Delia's, hey, can you come around and pick up the garbage, it's done during, and I have, I have had to do that with Stafford, they have come out and cleaned it up and done it, but I've never had to make that call, so there's one less management issue I've had to deal with when we had Delia's. From an athletic event, I think Mr. Reinhardt, if I, I think he feels more confident in Delia's and the striping and getting the grounds ready, typically, we give them a schedule, they know when the gains are, they know when to have everything ready, and there's never really a follow-up call.
They're very good.
And we didn't, when we went from Delia's to Stafford too, we didn't, we didn't have issues with Delia's, really. I remember quickly, the bidding, it was a bidding, were you on board? Okay, I didn't remember if you were on that, but yeah, there was...
And you probably remember shortly after you approved the bid, was our first heavy snowball in December, and I was actually the one I was helping plow, because it wasn't done very well, so I hope to never have to do that again.
Do we pay the field events for track field our own? Where, where is it in the bid here? I'm missing that.
The track of field?
That's football, soccer field, practice, auxiliary football, soccer fields, baseball, softball.
softball.
So any events that they paint on the football field, it is $160 we would pay per event. The practice at soccer fields are behind the high school, behind the middle school, where they do the soccer, that's their practice, that's $160. And softball and baseball, diamonds are $85 for us. So it's not necessarily for that sport, it's for the event at that site. So we would get a bill.
So you have painting and shot put and...
Yeah, I think she's asking...
So by the baseball field?
Is it done?
Yeah, it just was so specific and it doesn't say that, sorry.
Correct, because they, the specific is by the location at the sport, and that's typically how it's referred to. But if they needed it, all they have to do is, Chris would put it on the schedule, he knows to go out there.
So, so then is the answer to the question, it specifically says these spots. So there's a track being and the shot put and markings, which is by the baseball field, all that. Because it's a track event, it's given that information that day, it's track, it's being done. That's just showing the different spots that they paint.
Yes, that's the way the bid is written. But yes, if there's something that needs to be striped at the, on the...
So there's a track being, they know where to go, and it's one of those spots that's in the contract.
Correct. And there's initial every year in the spring or in the fall, when you do the football field, so the first year, there's that initial start off because they have to set up the strings and line it all proper the first time, and then after that, you're following the lines after it's been cut.
Okay.
There's nothing significant in your packet. I asked some clarifying questions, just see those copies of those answers. We typically don't aerate the thash, fertilize, but the fall cleanup we do, the spring cleanup we do. We looked at hourly rates, vaults for the elementary playground, we put in there. We also ate about 150 yards of mulch. Delia's is significant. We do that every year as part of the safety and make sure we have enough mulch down on the playground.
Any other questions? This will be coming back to us in two weeks to approve. Okay, next, the fun part of our meeting, first reading of board house.
Okay, it looks like a lot, but it really is. I want to preface this, but Neola sends us the board policy. They send it to every district at the starting point that Neola had. And each district that chooses, you'll see by X's in here, what policies, what sections we want to add to our policy. When they send a revision, they go back to the original, I got to recheck what the board had already asked for. So really what we're looking at, the only changes in all these policies is the stuff that is in bold and striked from now. So I'm going to go by, because a lot of them are similar, the first couple, the definition, which is the bylaw, definition, 0100, 0120, powers and velocity, function, membership and meaning, all deal with the board. When you look at that, it's updating the 0100 definition, it's adding definitions for greater clarification that they're recommending, using defining what family members are in this one. It defines in the first policy that by law now, a principal must hold the appropriate principal certification, what under the definition of a principal, under the definition of superintendent, and so forth. In the, one I do want to point out that they're recommending on page three of this one is voting. You do have the option that if you had to vote remotely, you could, but what the policy they recommend is you notify the board president. And we have done that in the past with a board member who couldn't. So that would be something we would add. And when you look at powers and, which is the next policy, again, the stuff that I marked in green is, or checked is the same that we've had. The difference is relating to changes in the Michigan School Code and it references particularly who holds the insurance benefit, public employee relationship, the Teacher Tenure Act eliminating, this is all legislatively changed. I'm going to group this together, then I'll ask questions. Functions, again, these are the, basically this is saying that as a board, you're going to be bound to the same bylaws and policy that we hold every employee and myself in the district to. But that's what the change in this policy represents. The three checks that I marked in green, you've already approved and are part of the current policy. Membership, again, all the stuff marked in green, one student body rep, seven board members is consistent, six-year terms, and they leave.
Right.
Yes.
Except the student body rep, I don't know that we, because we've had two.
The current policy is one. We did change it a couple of years, about a year ago, that we defined it to be one.
We did?
Yes. In this one, it's all, you know, it has that the board will not take compensation for the board meeting, that's still in there, I handbroke that in there, back in there. I think that's it on this one, it's still, still all the same existing policy. Meetings, which is $160, which is the last one. The change here speaks to a change in Michigan School Code, I think it's 380, 1201. It's page four of 0160, that says basically, any meeting canceled may be canceled for appropriate purposes, which shall include but not limit in clement weather, lack of form, et cetera. If the canceled meeting is a regular meeting, it must be rescheduled following all notices. So if for some reason we can't do it, we have to reschedule it and again post it like we normally do. The other piece that they're recommending is on page five, which basically if a person wishes to be placed on an item, they submit it to me and then I sit down with the board president when we set the agenda, and then we have the discretion of adding that to be on the agenda. It defines or clarifies when voting is done. Again, I'm just kind of summarizing this because it talks about when two-thirds is required, when you have to have a yay or day, et cetera, for the closed sessions. You can't deny when you get to the public comment section, you got to keep continuing, you can adjourn the meeting, then we can pick it up at a later point if it gets too late, were at that point. We've had that conversation with, I think Don gave us, I think it was Don, he gave us an opinion letter talking about what's on. So I'm coming to speak during public comment. I think our previous policy had said you can only speak three minutes, up to 30 minutes, and you cut it off. This kind of clarifies it or aligns with what we agreed to in our current policy.
At this point here, we, we don't do. Attendees must register their intention to participate of a portion of the meeting on their arrival at the meeting. Can that say, because we don't do that.
What about the close curtain?
Yeah, not prior to the meeting, we just, we just have people come up. So, I mean, does it have to be there? And if it does, can it say may?
Let me, let me tag that one and I will...
Okay. Because we don't do that.
That's a little board stuff. The next set of policies on the agenda, you'll see items that have an asterisk next to them. Item number six, seven, board policy 1442, board policy 1662, board policy 2260, board policy 3121, 3122, excuse me, board policy 3362, board policy 4122, board policy 4362, board policy 5517, board policy 5117.02. The change on these is, number one, it deals with Title IX coordinators, which we have to post and let everybody know. Each one of these policies, the 1,000s deal with professional staff, or the administrative few, 3,000 deal with professional staff, and 4,000 are support staff. But identifies myself as the male Title IX compliant, and Tammy Shad as the female Title IX compliant. All of the changes that you'll see in bold are, revises these policies, address the district's responsibility to maintain investigatory records acquired or created during the process of or investigation, based on a complaint or allegation. We have to keep them. And this is in response to, these are items that typically the U.S. Department of Education, when they're looking for an office of civil rights violation, would ask for or require for. So we have an obligation to retain those records if there is a Title IX compliance violation. So they're all, we post the Title IX language in our handbook, it'll be on any annual reports we send to the district and on the website, that's consistent through all of them. It does give on all the policies that Title IX person who's investigating has the ability to contact the district's attorneys for consultation to make sure that we're not creating more problems or a process that we need to follow. And then it talks about all the record reports, and that's where the chunk of all the bold stuff is consistent through all paper policies. So it deals not only with staff, but the 55, or the 5,000 policies are for students. That's a good chunk from there, that when you look at them side by side, they are having similar additions because of the OCR required to make documentation. Questions on those? Okay, there's another group that deal with federal, the Every Child Succeeds Act, which is policy 2112, which is number eight on the list, 2261, which is Title I Services on the list, number 10, 226103, which is 12 on the list, 226101, which is number 11, 2700, which is PA 25 Annual Report, number 14 on the list. These revisions are required to, there were amendments to the Every Child Succeeds Act, also known as ESSA, which is the amendment to the federal legislation of the Elementary and Secondary Education Act. So they change how we have to report items, what we have to report, so the policies in that group align to what we now have to do for the federal level as well as the state. There's a couple of them I just want to point out to you. The Title I is all alignment on what the Title I services were required, the family involvement, the definitions are amended to align with the Michigan Department of Education, what they define as family parent member participation, which is in 2261.01. So all of these are just a compliance to federal law and state guidance on the title. Next singleton is 2271, post-secondary dual enrollment. This policy, the only reason for the change in this policy is to align to the law. The law allows districts, and this doesn't even apply to us, but our policy would mimic the law. The law allows for districts that are on the border of the state of Michigan to allow students to go to another state's college and receive dual enrollment. So for instance, if I'm a district right on the southern border of Michigan and I want to dual enroll to the University of Toledo, this allows that student to, in dual enroll across state boundaries. This doesn't apply to us, but the change here, which is reference Michigan School Code 38 dot 513, it's just making our policy align with what state law says. Policy 3120, employment of professional staff, 3120.04, which is number 15 and 16 on the list, and 3130. These policies are based on Public Act 32233 of 2018, which provides the Michigan School Code, which allows the superintendent to employ non-certified instructors or substitutes who meet the qualifications, particularly in the CTE realm. It allows us to hire someone who may not have a teacher certificate in a CTE course. The other changes that it reflects is the employment of substitutes and professional staff, is the law says at a high school level, I cannot employ a substitute age 22 or less for high school as a substitute, but I can hire a person who's 22 as a high school teacher. That I'm actually wrong, but that's the way the law allows. And part of that is the close age of a high school student with a 22-year-old. So that was an amendment in the Public Act. And there are some teachers who have their degrees who are 22 years old. Or policy 4162, these are revisions to lay the rule changes with the U.S. Department of Transportation. It basically talks about controlled substances and those that define driving our buses, our commercial vehicles license, et cetera. What happens if they were in an accident? These are all as a result of changes in the U.S. Department of Education, excuse me, the U.S. Department of Transportation. 5330, which is item 23 on the list, use of medications. This is, there was a legislative change, House Bill 5379, which changed the school code, which allows students to possess and self-apply sunscreen. Prior to that, it's technically by policy, they weren't allowed to have sunscreen and apply it. And have, you know, the law's been changed, it allows, the district should not need to regulate non-prescription sunscreen as a medication. Evidently someone must have denied that, and so it became a law at some point.
Why is that? Why would anybody do that? It needs to be legislated.
So our policy just revised to make the change that is in compliance with the law.
I'm so excited for this, it's passed. Right.
5460, graduation requirements. This is, again, is a statutory change, House Bill 4106 and Senate Bill 3344. Basically allows us to begin awarding credit and puts it into policy for approved internships and work experiences. This is what I kind of alluded to, that to allow some flexibility with paths that we choose for kids to get them on a successful path. This does benefit us and is very good. It's a good option to have. It also allows the STEM endorsement, which we'll be working on to make sure that we're in compliance with that, that a student completes a certain number of courses and credits, that on their high school diploma, they receive a STEM endorsement. 54 to 5540, interrogation of students. As we are the proruntsals, when parents aren't here, that we are actually acting on their behalf, this clarifies when we're dealing with law enforcement and child protective services, when they come in to interrogate students, what our responsibility is. If by law we are not to notify the parents, then we aren't, but otherwise, the basis of the policy is saying that we have an obligation to try to notify the parents prior to the interrogation. Again, it's just a clarification. 6320, procurement, we spoke, the auditors spoke about our policies on how we procure funds. This deals with how we use grant funds to purchase things. It raises a lot of the thresholds that were previously in the district, but basically anytime we use federal funds, we have to use, follow the process of getting bonds, sealed bids. It raises the threshold, particularly from the food service, from 150,000 to 250,000. So for instance, over individually, we may not purchase, I'll just use chicken nuggets, that's the person that came in the food service department. Individually, we're not going to purchase a large quantity, but over the course of a year, we're going to have a large that might have hit that threshold. We would have to be obligated to follow the procurement policies when we hit that, those large, dairy, bread, those are items at the food service typically. Individually, we don't typically have large purchases like this through our title bonds. We don't even come close to a lot. 6350 is a rescinding the policy. The Michigan Legislature approved the petition by Protect Michigan Taxpayers Group, thus repealing Michigan's prevailing wage law. It's no longer required, unless you have to pay... It's no longer required unless you have to pay prevailing wages. That's a state law.
What does that have to do with you?
I'll have to get to the exact date. It might be on the policy in the back, but I will get to the exact date. That one's a bad one today. The last one is Policy 80 to 10, School Calendar. It revised our policy to be in alignment with the Michigan's revised school code, which basically said requires hours and days of instruction. It deletes language that's no longer needed, such as a phase-in portion. Oftentimes, the language is, if you have an existing contract in place, it's resulted after the contract. It doesn't, that's all taken out. In the policy, it's devoid, with only of state payments, we must meet the number of days and clock hours as statutory, statutoryly defined, unless we have an exemption from the state superintendent. It talks about, sorry, it talks about, in the policy, that we have five, you have at least five sessions where you're not in session, which is defined by the Common Calendar, which the Common Calendar puts out a five-year calendar. So if you went to the MIC website, you could see the next five years of the Common Calendar when all districts in the state, in the Com, excuse me, are off, unless they had an exemption by the state superintendent.
Except we don't have a common calendar for winter holiday break.
And the Common Calendar, it defines that you have, and it's listed as either a day of PD or this is a day. For us, minimally, as a county, you have to have one day off, which is President's Day, which we have one day off.
Right, so it's not a common calendar, because nobody does, there's nobody, not all the districts.
Everybody has that one day off. Some districts have five days off, you can go beyond.
Oh, that's what.
So the Common Calendar says from this date to this date, in December to January, every school district will off. Some districts have more of those days, but they also go longer into the summer. It has, the first week of April has the spring break for every district, as in the county. We have the fewest number of days off in our calendar. We usually get off at least a week earlier than other districts. That's the policies.
Okay. Are you seeing June 6th?
June 6th.
Is that the repeal?
Oh, really?
Interesting.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Brian. If anyone, as you're looking through, we have more questions about these policies, you could get Brian your questions, because in two weeks, we will approve them for second meeting. Okay? All right. Next is the portion of our meeting, which is public comment. It's the time if anyone would like to address the board, they may do so. You can come up to the podium. There should be a card up there. You can leave your name and number if you have a question that needs to be answered. Someone will get back with you. Public comment is not a question and answer with the board at that time. You have three minutes to speak. Is there anyone who would like to address the board?
Can I take that out?
You absolutely. Bring it down, take it out, whatever works. He's not going to hold it because I'm too short to have to stand behind it.
My name is Tammy Stafford, and I have a sixth grader at the middle school, and I'm coming to the board today with concerns about the standard-based grading that's been implemented this year at the school system. Some of the biggest frustrations that not only my daughter, but my husband and I have is inconsistency in the grading that we're experiencing throughout the teachers in the grade level, and also with just frustrations of the results of the grading. So just quickly, my husband and I went to the parent-teacher conferences and met with all, well, we didn't get a chance to meet with all four core teachers, but we met with three out of the four. And of those meetings, we had three different explanations as to what is required to achieve each level of the new grading system, whether that be not proficient, partially proficient, proficient, or advanced. So each teacher, the three teachers, each gave us a different explanation. There were also three different grading philosophies from these three core teachers, and also three different definitions of what is meant by going above and beyond, which is required to achieve an advanced proficiency grade in these classes. Other things that are very inconsistent is testing and the grading of testing. Some tests, my daughter brings home, and she has everything correct, nothing is wrong, and gets an advanced place, or advanced proficiency grade. The next day, she brings home a test with nothing wrong, everything correct, and gets a proficiency. Again, inconsistency in grading. Some tests, she gets nothing wrong, and when doing, okay, let me back up. So she wants to know what she has to do to get advanced proficiency, and we explained to her she has to go above and beyond, because that was what was explained to us at our conferences. So after conferences, the next test she takes, it was a science test, and she got nothing wrong of what was required of the test. And she went above and beyond in her mind and actually drew a diagram of what the concepts were that were taught in the class, and it was all kinds of different types of energy, thermal, radiation, convection, conduction, those kinds of things. And she drew a diagram on the test, not required by the teacher, and got a proficiency. So my husband and I actually met with Mr. Bartels and Mr. Burke Meyer shortly thereafter, and we were explaining our concerns, and he did a very nice job explaining what the system is and how it's supposed to work, with working through each individual standard. And I actually pulled out this example of the test, and he in his mind said, I would have given her an advanced proficiency on that. So again, inconsistency just across the board. Another example was in math. She got a, there were two questions on the test, she got two of those right. She decided to try and go above and beyond again in math and take the step of the distributive property, one extra step, to prove to the teacher that she can do it a different additional way, but still get the same answer. And his comment on the test was, only two, or two examples, the two on the test were enough proficient. So again, she's frustrated with trying to do what is needed to go above and beyond. So I brought this to the math teacher's attention, and he emailed me back, which was very nice, and he suggested that he's going to open up his classrooms on Friday at lunchtime for kids to come in and show that they can be advanced proficiency, which I don't think a child should have to give up their lunch break, because it truly is a lunch break to get away from the classroom, to go in and prove advanced proficiency versus proficiency. Just a couple other little things real quick. Overall, not only is it inconsistent, it's very frustrating for parents. We cannot get a consistently straight definition or explanation from teachers or administrators on how standard-based grading is being truly implemented in the system. Each teacher is determining students' grades on his, in his or her own way, it seems like on the parent's perspective, and the difference between being proficient and advanced proficient is truly almost a judgment call on the teacher, which is very hard on the student who's trying very hard to become advanced proficient and just not getting that satisfaction. And students, at least my daughter, I should say, they're not understanding the, what it takes to meet the true goal of this grading system. They're used to the ABCDs and Es and what it meant to do that, and it's never really been truly explained to the students besides above, going above and beyond. They don't know what that means at the age of 11, so they try and do their own thing to become above and beyond, and it's not, it's not what the teacher thinks is required to be advanced proficient. So it's a little frustrating for students who come home and think they are doing great and then get that paper and it comes back proficient. So that's one other thing. And then as far as actually the students too, feeling defeated coming home, thinking that, hey, I'm going to get an advanced proficiency on this because I did this, this, and this. I went above and beyond what was actually expected on this paper and not getting that additional reinforcement for, for actually doing what was expected, going above and beyond and still not getting the advanced proficiency. All I'm asking is possibly moving forward, that there needs to be more consistency and the frustration level for parents and students be lessened. I don't know exactly how that can be accomplished with this new system. I don't really think that some of the teachers were properly prepared for this change in the grading system. As you can see, that one teacher, you get 100%, that's advanced proficiency. The other teacher, you still get 100%, but it's only proficient. So the inconsistency is very frustrating for students, for parents, and especially when a parent can't really explain to their child why. So that's my thoughts and concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you hear? Well, I'm kind of there, please. Thank you. Is there anyone else? No? Okay. Interview. Thank you. Okay. Moving on. Our student board record report.
Well, as usual, start with the Lee School. The Lee Student Council installed a kindness rock garden by the playground, and each rock has their own individual message of kindness on it, and students can take one if they feel like they've had a bad day and they need something to make them feel better. The Green Club is collecting plastic caps, and these will be recycled and made into a bench. I think this is a really cool way of just like getting the kids interested in recycling. November 9th was the Veterans Day Assembly, and this recognizes veterans and the current military. Tonight was mixed staff night, and 10% of the sales will go to the Lee PBIS program. November 13th, Kent's Country Kitchen will be donating a percentage of their sales that day to the Lee PBIS program. November 12th through the 23rd, the Lee PTO Little Caesar's fundraiser will be held. Moving to the middle school, the end of the first marking period has happened, and the winter sports have started. The 10th Annual Veterans Ceremony was held, and they also had their Second Annual Pinkout, and this was in support of Susan G. Coman for the Cure Foundation, and they were able to receive $850 in donations. The first quarter Shine Prize winner won four piston tickets, and the annual Holocaust Museum field trip is coming up. And lastly, for the middle school, the annual NJHS Break and Run was held, and my brother was a part of that in the NJHS, and he said that it was really successful, and just at one house, they were able to break up 22 bags of leaves just in the front yard. So it was really cool.
And then he still thought that was okay?
I don't even care. Yeah, he said it was a lot of work.
22 bags.
But they had quite a few people doing it, so.
A joke by them doing it. They were having fun.
Yeah, for sure. And then, well, actually, this is last for the middle school. They held their Fall Book Fair. And moving on to the high school, Mr. Castle basically covered the whole math day, but just his little summary, that was all.
Mr. Castle.
No, you're good. You're good.
Tell us, what did you, did you like the math day? He's up so great.
I did not attend.
Oh.
I know, I know.
Skip that?
Yeah, I know. Bad on my part. But I've heard that, and I really do think that it's a cool program that we're putting in, just because like on SAT and just on like tests that actually count a lot for students, like I've seen in some PowerPoints in the board meetings, that math really isn't that high for us, or I wouldn't think it would be for anybody. Math is just a hard subject to learn. So I think that it is a cool program to help everybody and just get higher in areas that we know that we need to get higher in, rather than just like covering the basics. November 7th, the Interact Club hosted a women's self-defense course after school, and I did not attend that, but a few of my friends did, and they said it was really cool just to learn different things to help themselves. And the high school play, Bliss Spirit, will be in the high school auditorium this Thursday and Friday at 7:00 PM, and the Saturday at 2:00 PM. And lastly, it is Kindness Week, and students and staff are encouraged to participate. The Interact Club at the high school is doing a lot to participate in this Kindness Week, and one of the things, that they'll be painting rocks on Wednesday with kind messages, and they'll be placing them around the community.
Very cool. That's all that I got. All right. Thank you. You're welcome. Okay, next. Superintendent Legislative Update.
Well, we had an election, and so now we wait and see from the legislative forum about what's going to happen during lame duck. There are a couple pieces of legislation that we are, we mean, the education community is looking at what will happen in the 12 days that are scheduled before the end of the year, that the legislators will look back. And that's typically when they make rash decisions and implement policies that aren't very well applied, which is, as we know, we probably called it one example that they've done. So these are the things that we are watching. And House Bill 271 and House, or excuse me, Senate Bill 271 and House Bill 5157, both have a repeal on the start of the school day being before Labor Day. However, you cannot attend school on Mondays or Fridays in August. Both legislative zones. That's a Tuesday, Thursday, what calendar are these?
The second Tuesday about a number of months.
And with lame ducks, a lot of these are, may not, with the change in the legislation of the governor, may not. There are some positives that would help us and some that I don't know the thinking behind it. Senate Bill 384 would allow the expanded use of a sinking fund to now allow the purchase of school buses. So if your districts have sinking funds, that would be a plus. Senate Bill 584 would allow concealed carry, concealed carry in a pistol-free zone, which would include schools and would ban open carry in the same zone. So it's dealing with gun legislation and it relates to schools. Senate Bill 759 would ban union time from being counted towards retirement. Senate Bill 793 would ban collective bargaining agreements that have paid release time for union activities. As we've seen in the past, there's been an attack on unions in the state, but these are just two bills that continue that. Senate Bill 942, or excuse me, Senate Bill 924 would allow schools to hire private security police, and it gives them the same authority as local police. Senate, or House Bill 4163 makes the calendar a prohibited subject to bargaining. House Bill 4184 allows you can only be physically present to vote. If not, it'd be a creation of violation of the Meetings Act, which we just, someone talked about here. House Bill 4315 and 4316 revises graduation requirements to regulate foreign language, which we have that review if a student finishes a CTE program, they only have to take one year. It goes back to having two years of foreign language, and also requires students to have computer coding classes. So as you're allocating what courses they have to take, the number that students can select from and choose becomes more and more interesting. House Bill 4318 allows students to take statistics to fulfill the Algebra II requirement. On the search table, I don't see necessarily a problem with that one. It's a valid option. House Bill 5526 allows for the establishment of an A through F grading skill, grade system for public schools and repeals the state reform and redesign office. So basically, they want to go back and give every school district a letter grade based on criteria according to the current legislation that is not objective and is subjective to the person implementing this law. Those are the ones that we need to watch, because I fully anticipate some of these passing in lame duck session. The other one that I'm watching, it deals with student teachers and fingerprinting, and there is a House Bill, they actually had hearings last Thursday, House Bill 5543, which would require this burden to be on the school district or the ISD or public school academy, rather than the college that has the student. or the IST or public school academy, rather than the college that has the student teacher, to make sure that all the criminal history background checks are done, just as they were if we were hiring a person. Typically, the school district gets, does not receive any financial benefit for having student teachers, other than to help train them for a future. But now there potentially could be an expense on the district if we're required to do that paperwork. And I know Jamie's very excited about that one. And the last thing that I have is, you know, we talked about the school, and I guess this is a good problem we have. And so, I need the board to consider some things and, and. Can I put her under the guise or context of instructional spaces in the district, looking at fiscal responsibility and how to become operational efficiencies? Forgive my coloring. I was not the best student in coloring, but this basically gives you a map of Lee Elementary School right now. In the yellow, you see we have four kindergarten sections, first grade. We have four sections in green. Orange to the left is second grade, third grade. There are four sections in pink at the bottom right, and we have three sections of fourth grade in the bottom right. Bottom left over here, and I'll see if I can get the slide children, that'll be better. You've got the preschool wing here. You've got the specials classes listed there in the teal, computer lab, art, STEM, music, PE. You've got two Title I classes. We've got a literacy library that's been combined with the sensory room. We've had to, actually, our program expanded our early childhood this year with the addition of, we had actually moved preschool, or ECSE to down the three hundred hallway. Basically, what you're seeing in the map is there is no room left at Lee. There's not an empty classroom to utilize. The problem that we're facing, and it's a good problem, is that in nineteen-twenty school year, I'm more than likely going to recommend your budgeting on four kindergarten sections. So, if I move everybody out of the grade bubble, and I take these current third graders, and I have now four fourth grade sections, I have a teacher that has nowhere to go at Lee. And we're out of room. So, it's a good problem to have. When you look at these enrollment numbers, and this is as of today, what was in power's glass of today, we have currently three sections of fourth grade. If that holds true, we usually get that, those proctor schools that come to us at the middle school, more than likely, I'm gonna be coming to you and saying we need four sections of fifth grade next year. We typically get some of the proctor schools. We have had solid four sections in every grade level, when you look at the trend. None of these grade levels, kindergarten through third, would be anywhere where I would consider doing a split classroom, because the numbers just don't form, or you're going out on a three section without having a large number of students. Over the last couple of years, these are some of the things that we've done. The literacy library went from the back of the room in the library to the staff lounge, the staff room at Lee. Now, it's had its own room. The sensory room used to be its own classroom. As we've added sections, we now have it shared with the literacy library. We've added an additional preschool programming program, which required the ECSE classroom to move. We've had the expanded Title I programming services. We have now two Title I teachers in that building, as well as the educational paraprofessionals. We've added STEM. We moved from a world language, Spanish, to STEM. Currently, occupational and physical therapy that comes in from the IST is whenever they get there, we try to find a spot for them in the building based on what's going on. But there's no dedicated space. What I say is we have three options. One is we choose to eliminate some type of programming to make it fit. That could be eliminating title support to create a classroom. That could be eliminating, I have two up there, art and STEAM, because they are in a dedicated classroom. I wouldn't put a classroom in a PE classroom, or a music room, or a computer lab necessarily. So, we may look at something like we did last year, where we're taking a program away from students to create a classroom. We could eliminate a paid preschool program. What that does is now limits who we have in the building. And we've always gone by the philosophy of, if they're here, we're gonna find a spot to put them. We've added classrooms, sections, updates, et cetera. We could add a portable. You want me to pursue the cost of adding a portable classroom outside of Lee Elementary School? There are costs. My preliminary estimates today were around fifty thousand dollars. It's a, it's a one classroom that you're putting outside of the building. Or we could look at moving fourth grade to the middle school. Other than that, we're, we have, we have a good problem to have, that the numbers are there, but we have to figure out what we're gonna do for next school year. Because there are no classrooms at the today at Lee. So, when you look at this, and again, as the current map, this is the current map of the middle school. Again, forgive my crude drawings here, but just to give you a sense. Anything, here is the self-contained fifth grade. In the orange are sixth, seventh, and eighth grade classrooms with the specials. You have your gym, music, art, playroom. In the pink are special education services, whether it's a speech and language. But we have basically an entire wing that is empty at the middle school. You have a computer lab. We have two computer labs here. One is dedicated to a classroom, that's Mrs. Compo's classroom, and then one that is flexible for, whether it's state tests or teachers to sign out. I'm not in favor of eliminating programs. We have a lot of good things going on and supports in. And as our, as our population is evolving and changing, we need to make sure we keep those support systems. I don't think portable classrooms are the way to go. There's a lot of maintenance efforts with them. It includes classrooms. It is a possibility. If you were asking today, my recommendation would be to begin the process to move fourth grade to the middle school. So, let me show you what that might look like. At Lee, and again, this is not set in stone. This is a draft of what it would look like. Again, you have kindergarten, first grade assuming four sections. And what none of this entails is if we get, if that subdivision begins to develop, what happens when we hit the five classrooms of grade level? It potentially is gonna be there very soon. The idea would maybe keep third grade where they're at, put second grade down this wing, so you have a second, third grade wing. You have the early childhood keeping the ECSE there. Your gym, music, art, technology, and STEAM, as we maintain those programs. The special education classroom that was down here, that we relocate into this hallway. This room that currently is dotted is slash literacy library slash sensory room. It would allow us to put that sensory room back to what we originally had at its own room, because we have some students that, in a literacy library is a challenge because it's kind of overstimulated in that room. It allows OT and PT to begin having a space dedicated to them. And Lee's is still one classroom unused in this building. It has the two Title I, staff lounge, that were required by multiple contracts. Yeah. If we move fourth grade, what would it look like at the middle school? You know, that's, it could create a fourth and fifth grade wing. I'm gonna call it for lack of a better term, a school within a school, because they basically run on a different schedule than the current sixth through eighth grade. But you would have four fifth grades. Again, based on current numbers, if we were in May during the budgeting, it probably at this point would be asking for four sections of fifth grade. Which we put fourth grade here, fifth grade here. In the closed wing, we take four, basically four classrooms here, dedicated for sixth grade. And the remaining classrooms that are in orange would be for seventh and eighth grade specials. We still have the computer lab, and I forgot to draw the stripes over Mrs. Compo's room, but it still remains as a computer lab. As we're thinking program and logistics, in the bond, we have computer lab replacements built in. Five years ago, we purchased computers for these two labs. What I would suggest is we take one of the computer labs that we replaced, put them in Mrs., at least in Mrs. Compo's room. Take those computer labs and create a third computer lab. This room already has the drops, with electrical, we'd have to do the dock drops for the data, so there would be some cost there, but build a second lab. If you're dealing with four, five, six, seven, eight, five grade levels, probably a hundred, you're talking about five hundred kids. This leaves two classrooms that still would remain empty. This current classroom, over the years, and even the last five that I've been here, this classroom, things have been taken out of this room, like we needed life pictures to wrap them by, and we basically pillaged this classroom. So, this classroom would need significant investment to bring it back up to plastic. We currently have shelving in this classroom with extra books that we've had. It's stored there. Some of our old books are no longer used, but we have chosen not to discard them. This classroom here, that other end, old one here, the empty one, in the back, we keep excess furniture. We have some preschool tables that we don't currently need, but if we ever add it in another section, we'd have the infrastructure to put in there. Extra desks, we purchased desks with enrollment. We've got some desk flexibility and chairs, so that would all be stored in there. There's a couple basketball nets down there, portable basketball nets that are in there, et cetera. We'd move it all to this classroom. Some of the implementation points, some of the concerns that as we as a team talked about was the interaction with fourth graders to eighth graders. What we initially see is the interaction is limited, primarily at the beginning and end of the day, when they're coming into the building and they're leaving the building. There is a different L schedule, as I mentioned, for fifth grade that we do the same thing for fourth grade. Currently, we have four lunches at the middle school. We have a fifth grade, a sixth grade, and then two seventh, eighth grade lunches. We would move, propose to have a fourth grade lunch, a fifth grade lunch, a sixth grade, and then one seventh and eighth grade lunch. That's a larger group than that one. It would require some rethinking how we staff the lunchrooms. It would require a, if we didn't move lunch tables, we'd have to purchase some additional lunch tables, and those are one-time, a cost. Playground. That's one of the things, the middle school lacks a playground. It also lacks cubbies for books and coats. So, in, currently, fifth grade uses lockers. But if fourth grade moves over there, we need some spot for them to put their books and their coats. From a cost perspective, we invested about fifty-five thousand, I believe was the number, for the playground equipment at Lee. We invested approximately eight thousand per classroom, per cubby, when we redid the cubbies at Lee Elementary School. I don't have the final audited number, but as I mentioned earlier, our enrollment this year is better than projected. If that continues, we, it would help us for, for future, and when we get into future contract negotiations, as we have to deal with those. But there is potentially some revenue this year that is not yet allocated by the board. So, if you wanted to go down this road, I would recommend we take a portion of that revenue and allocate it towards a one-time purchase of a playground, as well as outfitting more classrooms with some type of cubby system. I put a dollar sign next to computer lab. That's that third computer lab. We currently have in the bond the actual hardware, but there's some infrastructure that we're gonna have to put in place with the data drops. If this is the direction the board would like to go or consider, here's a rough estimate of how I would, I would address it. Number one, I'd make sure that the staff was aware of it, particularly of the district. As people hear about this, typically, the first people they talk to is the staff. I would meet specifically with third, fourth, and fifth grade, those that are specifically affected, because particularly those third grade parents are gonna have a lot of questions for those teachers. So, I wanna make sure that we start putting together a Q and A for those teachers to help them understand processes. I would meet as a collective hall of the elementary and middle school staff, whether it's at their twenty-sixth staff meeting or some future one in December. I would specifically target a third grade parent meeting, because those are the parents that are most affected. We'd have the conversation with fourth grade, but those parents are already expecting going over to middle school next year. We'd have to look at particularly third grade. I would do staff assignments early for the fourth and fifth grade with the idea that those teachers know what grade level they're gonna be, know where they're going, so that when we hold parent meeting, parents would start putting a face with those staff rooms and assign those then earlier. We would schedule third and fourth grade, or do fourth grade, because this is the middle school, exposing the students. Again, it's beginning an informational campaign to help people process this and understand if this is the direction the board would like to go. You know, when I, when we look at the actual building, again, the only way to make room, we have to eliminate something to make room if you don't wanna make room. So, I'm looking for, and we're looking, this would be for the nineteen-twenty school year. Now, just, you know, the Mrs. O'Connor, and it's not O'Connor anymore. I forgot her name, Mary. Bojek. Bojek. Now, she moved literally classrooms so we can try to keep third grade together. So, she moved the last two years, three locations, two locations. She used to be up here. Then she moved down here, now she's moved over here. You know, all the supports that go with it, you know, from high, special education. We build special education based on the students and their IP. So, if I have fourth graders, and this year's third graders and this year's fourth graders are going over to the middle school, and it requires, it may increase and increase allocation of special education support at the middle school, but also may decrease at the elementary school, based on IP. Once we move, if this is the route we go, once we move students, when we look at Title I, there may be a change. We may have two buildings that are now designated in the formula that the state will submit for Title I, but I don't know those till the spring, when we do the submission. I just know today, I can assume three kindergartens next year, but our, our practice is we're solidly one hundred in one. That's twenty-five in a class. I can't imagine having thirty-three kindergarteners in a class to stay at three. Nor would I recommend that to the board. Even, even some of these, you know, that, that third grade, you know, we have four, and that's pushing them almost thirty kids per interim. Fourth grade with three, ninety-five in terms of power score. That could easily be twenty-four, 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 twenty-three. Or something along that line. I don't know if I got the map exactly right, but something along that line. So, I opened it up for questions. You know, my, my position is the sooner the better. I know just me presenting this, I need to do some type of information to the staff and some of the parent businesses, make consideration. There will be some that I believe, when we talked about this last time, that will be completely opposed to it. There will be some that I don't believe will have any, and there will be some that will be supportive of it. Fourth grade used to be in the middle school. I think Mr. Reiner was a fourth grader at which the middle school. Turn it off.
Well, I'll say, I don't like any of the fourths. It's not really the, the look I'm going for, so I'm not really going for that one. I know last time when you brought up moving the fourth grade, I was, I was one of those against it once. I didn't want my nine-year-old with eighth graders. And then I emailed Ryan a ton of questions today, thinking you were very with me on that, and we met, and you answered, you know, all my questions. And I would say I feel more comfortable with it now, sitting down and kind of going through it with you. My biggest concern is the before and after school interaction, because I'm just dropping my nine-year-old off in the morning, and she's gotta walk through this upper mid-grade wing where they're congregating to get to her fourth grade wing. So, if we, I'm, I'm okay with this proposal. I just wanna make sure there is staffing before and after school when those fourth graders have to walk through that upper mid-grade wing to get to their classrooms.
And what Corvair Gills is referring to is typically in the front of the middle school here, you'll have a line of parents dropping students off. The elementary, or excuse me, the middle school, high school students get dropped off by bus between the high school and the football field, and then they walk over. There are basically two entrances that are open in the morning. You have the one by the gym, so as students are walking, they can enter there. And then from the drop-off in the front, they enter the main front door. from the drop-off in the front, they enter the main front door. In this area is the fifth grade lockers, sixth grade lockers, seventh grade lockers, and eighth grade, so what you're referring to is if there was a fourth grader coming in the front door, that aspect. And those are conversations that as a team we've talked about and stuff that we've started putting on our list, if this is the road that we're gonna go down.